To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in the best law, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Motion to approve agenda.
To approve.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Approve. Public hearing to consider the proposed drawing specifications, form of contract, estimate of cost and award of bid for the construction of said proposed water main and wastewater improvement, CDVG number eighteen WS dash oh twenty-six Bloomfield Iowa twenty nineteen.
Mayor, we got Matt Walker from French.
We gotta open. Motion to open the public hearing.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody got any comments?
You want? Sure. Hopefully you guys got the bid tabulations. For Division One, which was the water main project, we received seven bids. The high was seven hundred ninety-five thousand four hundred and ten, ranging to the low, which was lost in construction, at five hundred thirty-four thousand seven hundred and nine dollars. As far as Division Two, there was three bids. The high bid was five hundred eighty-eight thousand six hundred and seventy-two, and Drish construction was the low bid at five hundred two thousand three hundred and three dollars and ten cents. There were no errors in the bids, so with that, we would recommend awarding to two lowest responsive bidders, which would be Lawson Construction for the first bid and Drish Construction for Division Number Two. With that, we do need to award pending DNR CDVG approval and approval of the SAM registry, which is a federal website that relates to CDVG pools. So with that, any questions? I will say Lawson Construction did a CDVG water main project for the city of Bloomfield back in thirteen and fourteen. I believe it was about six thousand feet, and Drish Construction has done numerous projects for the city over the years.
Mayor, why don't you indicate what the engineer asked for?
Oh, sure. Sure. For the Division One, it was six hundred nine thousand dollars, so that was approximately seventy-five thousand dollars low, and the Division Two, the estimate was four hundred and sixty-seven thousand, so the bid was about thirty-five thousand high. So all in all, together, is about forty thousand below the original estimate.
There was no option to, for a combined bid on?
No, it was one division. Yep. They were eligible to bid them full, but there's no combined bid with an incentive.
There's no reason to believe that there's anything changed in the scope at this point?
No, everything, everything looked reasonable, the bids, you know, prices came in. I mean, you're always gonna see a huge flux of prices between the high and the low. We're seeing a lot of projects up for bid this time, so some of the hires are just throwing it out there. If I get it, I will definitely make some money and make it work, but it's not something that I need right now. So the contractors definitely, most of them aren't charging.
We had seven bidders for the, the water and three bidders for the sewer. Pretty good in this function.
Does anybody else got anything to add or discuss? Move to close the public hearing?
Don't move.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Approve. Then we already did the review. Consider approving resolution involving plans, specifications, form of contract, estimate of cost and order bid for water main and wastewater improvement, CDVG number eighteen dash WS dash zero two-six Bloomfield Iowa twenty nineteen. Motion to approve resolution.
Make the motion to approve.
That is subject to DNR and CDVG and SAM.
Yep.
Review.
Earl?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Jack?
Yes.
Darren?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Public hearing to amend an ordinance of Bloomfield co-ordinances relating to pools, fences and accessory buildings. Motion to open public hearing.
Move to open public hearing.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Approve. Anybody from the public have any? Discussion on the pools? This one we have our discussion about the pools?
I think after the first motion on the, I, I think, right? It was way after the first reading?
What do you call accessory buildings?
Basically any structure. Uh, that's in the definition, that's one of the things, basically any structure that's a permanent structure built onto the property.
Anybody else got anything for the public hearing? Move to close the public hearing?
Don't move.
All in favor?
Aye.
Approve. Consider first reading of ordinance amending Bloomfield co-ordinances Bloomfield Iowa by changing one sixty-five point oh-two definitions, one sixty-five point one-five fences, walls and division clearance, one sixty-five point one-seven accessory structure restriction section and one sixty-five point three-one B's. Any discussion?
Thank you, Chris. Where'd you end up with?
So we took the recommendations that you gave us last week, and I, I, that's how it's printed and, and delivered to you guys, but I know there's been some discussion about taking out the fence requirement, and so if, I mean, if you wanna make that and discuss it, that's your, up to you.
I understand that what's on the agenda is just first reading, so there won't be any call for a waiver, go third, we will have to visit this again in the next meeting.
I'm not a fan of the fences. Just for the fact of telling somebody that they have to build a fence when we don't put them around permanent bodies of water, but yeah, we're gonna put them around a temporary body of water, I just, I don't see the, I don't see the reasoning behind that.
I'd rather say recommend fencing than not require. Yeah, is there any legal reasons why we have to force them to put up a fence?
No, other than like the Consumer Private Safety Commission suggests that you have fence. The state law is that any governmental body or any commercial entity has to have a fence. And there's a, you know, association between young children, ages zero to three and deaths in around, so many pools that they don't have enclosures.
Is that, but we're not closing the life of pool that they drowned in?
Uh, actually, ten percent of deaths of one to, or zero to three-year-olds are in above ground pools.
But how tall?
Uh, I didn't, I, I just was trying to get up to date on this issue. Coming here, I get one that-
Cause eighteen inches and below, we don't require, or not require an offense, and your zero to three is probably gonna be in that size of a pool.
It can also be, I don't know, ones that they can get up in them. I mean, so even if you have a fence, I mean, you can do it some other ways by requiring maybe have a ladder that takes them up, uh, high enough that they wouldn't be able to get to it, or you just fence the ladder in around that.
Does not require an offense put the city in any liability?
I've not been able to find any authority for that.
I mean, we got a six-foot fence around the city pool and they get in there all puffed.
Right, but that's not zero to three.
No, but I'm just saying it's, the reason for the fence isn't the reasoning behind the fence. But there's nothing that's, makes us liable if we don't have fences?
I've not been able to find any, any legal authority for that.
What's everybody's opinion, Earl?
Having worked in a hospital, ERs, I've seen too many drownings, and the majority of them occurred in pools that weren't fenced, so I'm a believer in a fence.
Has anybody got any statistics on any drownings in Bloomfield that was in pools versus permanent bodies of water?
Yes, I can only remember two drowning in Bloomfield, they're both in ponds. That's what I-
Unfortunately, I've carried a nine. Unfortunately, I carried a seven-year-old out. But I don't, I don't know if there was a fence around her or not.
A little busy.
Yeah, I know we've had a couple in ponds.
Well, I-
Fences around ponds, so.
I've got that one three drowning in Davis County, and two of them in a lake, and one was in the river.
Couple I know of was in a lake, and there was a fence around the lake, but. Well, I guess what do we wanna do? Do you wanna get rid of fences?
What do we have to do? Read the ordinance and then move to amend it in the next meeting, or? If you wanna, if you wanna make amendment tonight, uh, you can do so, and then that amendment would be attached to the ordinance if you wanna pass it, then you'd have the amended ordinance reprinted at that point for the next meeting for them to decide what you can do. But if you want to amend, I would suggest you do it tonight, so then we publish the revised.
You want to make a motion to amend it?
Yes, I'd like to make an amendment.
And to remove the fences.
We have a requirement.
We have a requirement?
Yes.
We have a motion to amend the ordinance by removing fences. I have a second?
I'll second. Related to pools.
Yeah, related to pools.
Darren?
Can I ask you a question before you do that? Just for clarification, there was a discussion about removal versus, the requirement versus recommendation. Can you clarify for me how you wanna word it?
Does it make any difference from the latest standpoint if you recommend?
I would say that the ordinance establishes the standard for the homeowner. So if it says recommend, it probably would be more influential with the jury in terms of whether that homeowner's got liability, they're not liable, because that's zero to three-year-old. I'm not sure that there's a significant difference between.
So we're just saying?
If we put in recommend and not required?
Not required. Recommended, recommended but not required?
I probably would put that but not required.
Just vote recommend?
Cause if you say recommend, it's, it's obvious that it's not mandatory.
So tell us what we need.
So-
Scott's going to say it.
Alright.
We've brushed, recommend a fence.
Recommend.
I think they're friendly amending their motion. They're gonna restart the voting.
Just one procedural, Chris, if we don't have a fence requirement, um, and people decide that they do wanna put one in, does that get us to a different height than according to the existing code?
Uh, it's different than four feet, that was. So my assumption from what I'm hearing is that the only difference in the wording is gonna be recommend as opposed to require, but the language with the four feet as opposed to the six foot will stay.
So it'll still say pools eighteen to forty-eight inches with a four-foot fence. That's what you ha, if you build a fence, it has to be that, but you don't have to have it, right? Is that what you're, so it's gonna give you the required?
How about you say that you recommend?
It's gonna give you the recommended fencing if you decide to do one.
Right, I would just change the word from required to recommend, and then all the, everything else that was added then.
What, are you looking at? One sixty-five fifteen five A or?
Yeah, let me see.
Sixty-five fifteen.
Cause I'm not seeing how you're gonna use that language. Sorry. This currently says, the, the suggestion is, except as otherwise provided, fenced enclosure shall provide, shall be provided for swimming pools or any other permanent body of water with a depth of eighteen inches or more shall be subject to following requirements, and outdoor swimming pool, blah, 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 shall be completely.
So instead of subject to the following requirements, can we say subject to the following recommendations?
Well, you got a lot of shells in there. I mean, fenced enclosure shall be provided.
Is, yeah, is that, I mean, we still need to?
How about if we, we know what your intent is, we'll draft it and get it to you, is that, can we do that?
So we got a motion to amend the ordinance by adding recommend fences instead of requiring fences for pools. And we got a motion and a second.
Darren?
Yes.
Earl?
Yes.
Jack?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Public comments? I know we got, um, Mark Comfort is here from the Davis County Child Abuse Prevention Council with a proclamation for Child Prevention Month for April.
I'm also a sexual abuse prevention specialist, I work with kids, and so yes, April is Child Abuse Prevention Month, but we all know that prevention should take place twenty-four seven. This is, I told the mayor that I would read it, so it was kind of long. So, whereas our children are our most valuable resource, it will shape the future of Bloomfield Iowa. Whereas child abuse and neglect directly harms children and increases the likelihood of long-term physical and mental health problems, alcohol and substance abuse, continued family violence and criminal behavior. Whereas children suffering from child abuse are more likely to engage in risky behavior, perform poorly in school, develop unhealthy relationships, suffer from depression, attempt suicide and express violent aggression. And whereas only one dollar is spent on preventing child abuse in Iowa for every fifty dollars spent on treating it. And whereas Iowa's leading research efforts to better understand the negative long-term outcomes of child abuse and neglect among adults through the Adverse Childhood Experiences Study, which shows that poor physical health, mental health and financial health in adulthood is attributed to adverse experiences in childhood, including abuse and neglect. And whereas the risk of child abuse is reduced through strong social supports for adults and children. And whereas research shows that the presence of one caring relationship in a child's life mitigates negative, negative outcomes and reduces risk factors, resulting in better physical health, mental health and financial health. And whereas positive social support for children and adults are key factors to improving social well-being in Iowa. And whereas the Connections Matter Initiative, supported by the Davis County Child Abuse Prevention Council, promotes the development of positive social supports and communicates the healing power of relationships in children's development and the community's growth. Now therefore I, Dan Wigan, do hereby proclaim April tw- two thousand nineteen as Child Abuse Prevention Month in Bloomfield Iowa, and urge all citizens in our community to increase their participation in building caring connections with families, thereby preventing child abuse and strengthening the community in which we live, in testimony whereof and so on. And so the Davis County Child Abuse Prevention Council is sponsoring trainings. Oh, oh, I'm getting a picture.
Then go ahead.
I should've had my hair done. I've been putting pinwheel guards. Oh, that's okay. I've been putting pinwheel guards up. But the Davis County Child Abuse Prevention Council is doing some trainings this month. Um, Stewards of Children on April twenty-ninth at the hospital is a great prevention awareness program for all community members, and will be sponsoring trainings throughout the year, and they're free, so. Thank you so much for getting me here on short notice, I really appreciate it.
Thanks for being with us.
Thanks for reading that.
You're welcome.
Any other public comments? Consent agenda.
Move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Approve. Old business, update from utility use regarding progress on meter switches.
Mayor, council head Brad Foyle will be joining us at the conference here for Google meets.
Brad?
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Hello?
Yes.
Are you able to hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, hi. Yes, hello. Kind of, sorry guys, connection's not great where I'm at. Yes, thank you for having me, City of Bloomfield. We've been working on the gas, water and electric meter upgrades and changeouts. We have about fourteen hundred of each meters, and we started out doing gas and water meters. Uh, we had a bit of a change at the beginning, uh, to the plan to add electric into the mix at the same time, so we're able to change up some of the stuff, and we are currently installing gas, water and electric concurrently. It was slow going during the winter weeks, of course, but you guys know the weather has changed for the better, so we've really been able to increase the installation numbers. Uh, the goal is to be done by the end of this month, uh, maybe going into the first week of May, doing some cleanup. And we've recently just gone past the halfway mark as far as installation numbers. So the goal is close to five hundred per week until the end of the project.
Questions? Is the wild electric meter readings, is that on utility uses end, or is that on the meter suppliers? And some wild number, or is that on our end?
So Brad, the question, in case you didn't hear, was we've had some pretty high electric usage numbers reported in our billing system, and the question was whether it's on our system or on something happening in the installation. I think the short- Do you mind if I give an explanation? You can correct me if I'm wrong.
Go ahead.
I think what's happening is when we get the file in from a, some, on occasion, a meter will have a lower number, they're new meters, and they'll have a lower number than the previous number, and the read-in and read-out isn't happening, so it's taking that reading and rolling it over, and that's why we're seeing it. So it's just a fluke that's happening in that file transfer, from what I understand. Do you have any insight, Brad?
Actually, I, I have not heard of any issues with the electric meters. The situation you explained is typical, some, I've seen that happen quite often, um, so that's very good explanation, but I can definitely dig into it more. Yeah, this is the first time I've heard about that, but that sounds like that's probably what's happening.
Chris, why don't you explain what we are doing to rectify those kinds of concerns?
Well, I think the most important thing is if you're a customer and you've had a, an outlier reading, you know, if your reading is really high or really low, definitely reach out to the, the city and the billing, and we'll work with you, we'll get out there, we'll double check the readings, make sure we make a correction on your bill and get that taken care of.
Explain Novus and pictures, documentation reading?
Go ahead.
Okay. So Brad, I'll talk about Novus to the software you're using. So when, when they changed the meters out, they're actually keeping good records on their side, they'll actually read out the meter number, they'll actually snap a picture of it, they'll pull the meter, do the documentation, put a new meter in, snap a new picture of the new meter, serial number and everything else, document all that. So if we do have a question, like you said, if there's a billing question, we can actually go in, pull up our history data and sum it at our system, we can also then go to Novus, their system, and then look, even pull up the pictures in the date time group, one of us changed out and all the numbers, so we can actually then compare the numbers and have it, so. So they're keeping excellent records on their side, it's just a matter of, you know, comparison if we need to.
Just don't mess with mine, I like the way they mess with mine.
I know that's, uh, about a week and a half ago, we had, I think, eleven instances. Do we have any update on that?
I don't know the numbers. Sandy, do you know how many errors, reading errors we've had?
No, I don't.
Yeah, I'm kind of in my area. Some of it's not reading errors, some of those actually were, they was asking about the bill being higher, the, the issue was our reading cycle, so we was off on reading, so one house's read might've been a twenty-eight day cycle or a thirty-four day cycle versus what they're used to reading, so some of the bills are just a little higher because they weren't read and considered, you know, thirty-day cycle. So that's what a lot of the confusion is too, is the extended billing cycle. And it was a harsher winter, some, they are, some of the bills were higher during winter this year too, so. So higher bills, longer cycle, made the bill a lot higher than.
Thank you, Brad.
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you, City of Bloomfield.
Anything else on that?
Let's ship further questions.
All comments, I had a really high read, and got with them, and they got right back with me and took care of it, and cured it right up, so. Got great service.
You got that pole, you know?
No, Kyle's very good about getting back with anyone who calls in without concern.
Consider setting start date for the East Street Culver project.
I guess I just put that on there, we just need to get a date, and then we talked, we had a special meeting to postpone the start date after school, and I just need to know, and we don't have to make a decision tonight, but we just need to have a, I guess, probably at least by the next council meeting somewhere, the post-start date, so we put that down. We have, cause on the contract, you put in thirty working days or six-week project at a time, and we also have in there liquidated damages to go over those days, so we just wanna make sure we establish that start time, so we can, you know, hold the project, so.
I think the date we discussed was June the third.
June the third. If that's, I mean, if June third, we just gotta have that. Yeah, we just, somebody wanna make a promotion to June third's the new start date? Second?
That's good in theory.
Absolutely.
I'll hand these out in a minute.
My name is Troy DeJody, I'm the Executive Director at the Iowa Association of Municipal Utilities. I don't know, do I need to stand by the microphone? No, you're good. Okay. So, I just wanted to come in, give you a little update on what we do, who we are. We are... Okay, then, I'm gonna steal this. We are the Statewide Trade Association. First of all, there's a lot of pages here, so I'm gonna roll, because I know you all want to be places. I will warn you that I am a recovering lawyer, so the odds of me staying within the time limit are not terribly good, all things... We are the Statewide Trade Association for Municipal Utilities, natural gas, water, electric, and broadband. On the second page, second slide, you can see we have 541 water utilities, 136 municipal electric utilities, 51 municipal natural gas utilities, 25 municipal broadband utilities. We were started in 1947. We are a nonprofit, we are not a governmental body, we're not a 2080. We have an 11-member Board of Directors that are all typically general managers, city administrators, public works directors, things like that. They're all at large, so I would encourage anyone who's interested to come participate. We have a simple mission, and that is to strengthen, to support and strengthen Iowa's municipal utilities. We do that in three ways. We do advocacy, we do training and education, and we do a little bit of operational assistance in various ways. Our advocacy efforts are fourfold. We do public relations, not only through our association, but we have a full-time contracted public relations firm that is constantly out there mining good stories to put in the media and develop those types of things. We have a, we do legislative relations, both at the state and federal level. At the state level, we have a full-time employee who's a lobbyist, he's in the Capitol every day, sessions in. We also have a part-time contract lobbyist. At the federal level, we participate mostly through our national organizations. We do make at least one, if not two, trips to visit all of the Iowa delegation and talk about what's going on in the world of municipal utilities. Latest one, up until tax reform, it was all about tax exempt bonding. There was always this push to get rid of tax exempt bonding at the federal level. We think we've put that baby to bed for now, so at least that's what they tell us. We do a lot of regulatory representation, so we respond, we respond to note and comment periods at the DNR, the EPA at the federal level, Utilities Board, those types of things. We do occasionally appeal those rules and take those into the courts, or most of the time we file amicus reis, we're not the primary appellant. And then we do a tiny bit of litigation support, and typically that comes up in a situation where we have a small community who's got an issue that matters to everybody. The last one we had is the City of, or Mount Pleasant Municipal Utilities, had a person run up a $2,000 bill, she moved away, she came back, and they didn't want to turn her on. And there is a section in the city code that explicitly says municipal utilities don't have to turn them on if they don't get caught up. The Utilities Board took a different position, there was an appeal, it went to court. Right before it went to court, the Utilities Board said, hey, Mount Pleasant, if you just waived that $2,000, we'll just call it good. Well, they can't afford to take it to court to pay those attorney's fees, but it's a very, it's a significant jurisdictional issue, and we saw it as an overstep by the Utilities Board, so we backed that. We don't do that all very often, and we're very, we're very picky about when we do it, but we do do a little bit. I've been here five years, and that's the only one that we've done. So, covered that, we do have a, because we're a trade association, not a 2080, we're not the league, which is sort of a hybrid, we, we have a PAC, it's called MEAT PAC, it's Public Action Committee. We donate pretty much across the aisle in there, large amounts, but it's enough that it matters, in particular to the leadership. Where it matters maybe most is when we don't give, we get the leadership asking, why didn't so-and-so get, and there's usually a story. Next one. So we do training through a lot of different ways. We have conferences, workshops, webinars, we have safety clusters, direct contracts, and then something fell off. We do a lot of print, email, paper, those types of things, educational things. Next slide. Okay. So we have a unique situation, we're in Ankeny, north of Des Moines, 25 acres on the south side of Ankeny. 11 of that is a functioning utility training field. So overhead and underground electric lines, water lines, both underground, as well as we have some above ground that we can do tapping and teach tapping and stuff while they're not standing in a hole. We do trenching and shoring. It is a, probably can't see it, it's the upper right-hand picture, we have what we call Safe City, which is four little dollhouses that we have service drops. Everything there, the gas, the gas and water is fully functional, the electric is low voltage to the, to the house, but not enough to do anything. We do have pole tops that sit, you know, five feet, so people don't have to be in a bucket, we can teach five or six people around. It's a great, it's a great, great, unique facility. We have sort of five acres of building complexes, which includes a 70-seat auditorium, a boardroom and classroom that'll seat 30, and we have a temperature-controlled shop where we can do some hands-on training and stuff in the winter, which is the best time to do it, because nobody can get there in the summer. Every other summer, we do do, or we have in the past, we're evaluating right now, we do a demo day for equipment out on the training field, and we let people dig, and that's what the vendors really like, it's unique versus being in a conference center or a... So. Last year, we did 62 workshops, 796 instructional hours, and about 1,800 attendees, and that doesn't count our, our safety clusters. We, I'll talk about it now, because I, it might be later. We have 11 safety clusters, they range from five members to about 17. They are groups of small communities to big communities, geographically usually, that they contract together with us, and they decide on the curriculum, and we typically do training. We do have a couple contracts. Northeast, Northwest Iowa just started, where we actually, we, their cluster takes on a full-blown safety program. So we put in all the policies and the procedures, we do facilities inspections, we do all of that, and it's, that person is dedicated to them, she lives in Sioux Center, and so we do that in a number of different ways. We have seven full-time safety trainers that are on the road all the time. They do live training for these groups of clusters mostly. If you're in a cluster, you can send every employee you've got, or not, somebody will, makes it affordable. We cover the scope of operations, we do, like I said, we do a huge part of what we do is safety, we do utility operations, a lot of skills training, water, gas, electric, not as much in broadband. We do some workforce development, management skills, compensation benefits, we talk about the importance of those types of things. I usually like to say, if you're making a choice not to pay what the market is, you're making a choice not to be a utility in the long term, because it's a, it's a hot market. We teach some governance issues, we talk, we do some industry issues, like, you know, what's going on in, in electric facilities. Do a lot of legal, open meetings, harassment and discrimination, talk about private use, city transfers, and we do some utility finance, budgeting, capital rates. We have a, we have two, one and a half people who do full-time water, water stuff, one of whom is a, it's grade-two treatment, grade-two distribution, grade-one wastewater. He is dealing, especially with small communities, that job, that position is actually, we have a grant through the DNR to help small communities, any, actually not just communities, not just municipals, but anybody who's got a water system. It could be a trailer park, it could be a golf course, it could be stuff like that. Next. On the gas side, we have several plans, I think you participate in those. We have several plans, operated qualification plan, operations and maintenance plan, those are sort of wholesale, can just be adopted by the communities, take out all the compliance effort. We do a compliance assistance program where we'll come in pre-IEB inspection, get everything ready, come back afterwards and deconstruct. We do do some natural gas construction, we have two people on staff who do that, one of whom is certified pipeline welder, and we don't do as much of that as we used to, used to be a big part of what we do, but it's a, it's not. And when, when it is a big part of what we do, it's because the contractors are all busy, and our small communities can't get that regulator station done, or something that they need done, and then we have a mutual aid program. In electric, we have, our big thing is we have a Department of Labor-approved apprenticeship program. It's a four-year program, and there's both an underground and an overhead one, very popular. We have, we actually administer it, it's our program, we license it to the co-ops as well, I think we have 150 people in it, pretty much at any, any given time. It is self-driven, it's taught out of books. We'd like to do it differently, but long-term, that's gonna, that's gonna take some effort. We do a lot of operational skills workshops, like I said, mutual aid, and some regulatory filing assistance, CIA stuff and things like that. Yes. So safety, like I said, we do, we have 60 topics that we train. We do do program development and management for people on one sort of contract basis. We do accident investigations, facility inspections, and then we do mobile crane certification. That is an OSHA deal right now, and we teach that all the time, because you can only teach eight people at a time. So, thanks. So energy services, we have a full-time energy efficiency employee who runs all of this, consults with our members, I don't know if you've heard... Yeah, I thought so, okay. We just launched our MEAT box, which is our online platform for rebate administration, so we're really excited about that. We have a, have a grant for a security and critical infrastructure position, infrastructure protection position. Russ comes from us, from the military, as well as some time with federal government, FEMA, and that sort of thing, spends a lot of time educating, doing awareness on various types of security things. Everybody wants to talk about cybersecurity, it's really sexy, and it's akin to your pool, your swimming pool problem, you know? There's a eight-foot, there's a six-foot fence around the water pump station, or the substation, or whatever. So we talk all we want about shutting things down, the grid down, but the fact is, in most places, the worry is the fence that doesn't have any barbed wire or what have you. We're not advocating you go out and do that, but Russ is there as a, as a resource. Thanks. We have a group of communications or stock stuff that we make, we make available to members, that members can slap their logos on, send it out to their customers and those sorts of things. We do weekly newsletter, quarterly magazine, and we, like I said, we have some consumer and employee educational materials that we put together as well. We have a pool program where we license, we're temp agency. We take retired, retired municipal utility employees, and we place them places where they need expertise. It could be short-term, because they got a utility superintendent who up and moved on, a retiree. Sometimes we have retirees who retire on a Friday and go back on Monday, working for us in the same exact position. So we do it in a lot of different ways, but it's an effective way. It, it works. Thanks.
Sorry, I was causing that.
So, we have, I'm gonna talk about two sponsored programs. The first one is our Safety Group Insurance Program, it's an insurance trust that we run. We sponsor through EMC Insurance, managing agent is Jester Insurance, and then we use the local agents, which is what makes it unique. It's insurance, it's PNC, it's Workers' Comp, it's employment practices, it's everything. What makes it unique is it's governed by a three-person committee of members, and they make decisions on what happens. EMC, the contract allows EMC to make a certain amount of money, anything above that comes back to the trust, and then the trust committee decides to re-put, put that back into our members. Last 15 years, they've put $30 million back in premium, it's all based on your, it's proportions of your premiums. $10 million in the last five, last year, we returned $4.5 million to the, to the participants. Whenever I do this, the next question is, how much would ours? You're not a participant, I always check that. I have no idea. It really all depends on what you, what you spend, but it's a, it's a popular program. One of the things that makes it unique is you can get in and out. Some, a lot of, a lot of group programs, you can't, it's hard to get in and out, and that's not the cases here. Next one. And then Iowa Public Agency Investment Trust, it's an investment pool, it's run by Miles Capital, we sponsor it with the League of Cities and the Association of Counties, State Association of Counties. It's, people put property tax money there, things like that, where they need a liquid spot that's safe, maybe can earn a little bit more. Sometimes we can, sometimes we can't. It is totally outsourced, we don't ever touch it, we don't ever even see it. If people want to participate, they call Miles Capital, and they make sure that they can get, get the money where it needs to go. That's me. I'm terrible. Questions? Anything?
Been a middle of two years, haven't we? Is that right?
Well, longer than that, yeah. We've had 136 electric members. Our numbers have stayed even since I've been here. Lost a few water systems that have chose to sell, because it seems to be popular right now, but anyway. You, I will say this, you're, you're one of the more progressive communities, especially for a community of your size. Things you've done for your ratepayers, I think, are not only impressive, but very forward-thinking. We tell people right now, there are two things you should be concerned about on the electric side, for example, and that is, are you paying attention to your rates? And we are, we are agnostic about a lot of stuff. We preach local control. So we're not here to tell you that you should do this rate structure, or you should do that rate structure. Our job is to say, you should be paying attention to your rates. And there are benefits and burdens to various rate structures, there are benefits and burdens to various power supply structures, whatever's right for your community. And I can tell you that there's a lot of communities in your situation that haven't paid attention, and they've just bought power from somebody who walked in the door 20 years ago, and they signed a 30-year agreement, and they're hurting. So, good for you. I say that not to patronize you, but it's true. So...
Thank you. Yeah, I appreciate it.
Thanks. I guess, first I had, Troy, if you could just explain, what are the next year's membership dues? Just how about that dues gets, you know, all those, I guess, benefits services, and how the dues will maybe come across and...
Sure. So, it's a little bit complex. There's a base fee, and they're all different. There's one thing that you would have seen differently this year, which is, you just seen water dues. Dues are approved in February by the group of the members at the annual meeting. Those are recommended, every year we put together a budget, executive committee of the board recommends it to the board, the board makes a recommendation to the budget. We have had, for 15 years, we've had a grant in water that probably 60 to 70 grand a year has paid for a lot of the stuff that we did. That's up for renewal, and we're questionable about whether we're gonna get it. So the membership made the decision to, there used to be an exemption, nobody can tell us why, there used to be an exemption if you had gas or water, or gas or electric, and you were exempt from water dues. And they made the decision to get rid of that exemption. So that's probably cost you 750, something like that. recommends it to the Board. The Board makes a recommendation to the budget. We have had, for 15 years, we've had a grant in water that probably 60 to 70 grand a year has paid for a lot of the stuff that we did. That's up for renewal, and we're questionable about whether we're going to get it. So the membership made the decision to, there used to be an exemption. Nobody can tell us why. There used to be an exemption if you had gas or water, or gas or electric, and you were exempt from water dues. And they made the decision to get rid of that exemption. So that's probably cost you 750, something like that? Yeah. We, a lot of that stuff is, well, you get, all the advocacy stuff comes within the dues. We spend a ton of time on water right now, especially legislative or regulatory. If you've seen stuff with the Des Moines Water Works doing the drainage districts and things like that, that's brought a lot, a lot to the table. We have, we have a unique dues structure in water. It's 541 members, and the largest one probably pays just under $3,000. If you look at electric, it's significantly more, thousands of dollars more because there's a lot less. A lot of what you get is low-cost stuff. We have just started, when I got here five years ago, we had a negative $11,000 in the bank, negative. And so we spent a lot of time selling services. And in this fiscal year, our strategic plan calls for, I hate to say give, but including more and more within the dues. And so that's what, that's what we do. So it's hard, there's, there's not a ton that's free, but it's below market. Definitely, definitely below the market.
Consider approval of IAMU membership dues in the amount of $7,773.
Move to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Pose. Discuss issues with Q-Works Software Data Technology Summit.
I don't know what this is.
Q.
Q-Works?
G.
G-Works? Why didn't I say Q?
Yeah.
All right.
That's okay.
I still don't know what it is, what we're talking about on this one.
Well, nobody's got anything on it. We'll just skip it.
Okay.
Let's just skip it. Consider awarding bid for mowing I-000F cemetery. We've got three bids. They're all from the same person with three different options. One bid was the way it was advertised. One bid is the way they've been doing it in the past, and that includes some tree trimming and brush. And then another bid includes landscaping. I'm not sure. Can you?
It would be, the last one you're talking about, there's like some shrubs around the fly pole area, and then also around the bell tower, there's some. So it'd be taking care of those shrubs, remolding, keeping the weeds down. That's what would be added on to the one you're just talking about.
So what's the change? If you can comment, we advertised one thing, and you were giving us something else. What, what's the difference between what we advertised and what you did last year?
Advertised, as near as I understood, was just mowing and trimming.
Okay.
So what we've been doing is mowing, trimming, trimming any trees that need to be trimmed. If one dies, we take it out. Also around the north side, there, there's a lot of brush that keeps wanting to work its way in, so we try to keep that cut back. I do some spraying to keep some of the small stuff burned down. And then, so that's what we have been doing.
Right.
The landscape maintenance would be in addition. We haven't done that in the past. Dale Shark, I think, has been doing it, and he told me, he thought I needed to just add that in, so it was done that way. So that's what I did.
Okay.
The bid to do it like was advertised is $39,270. The bid to do it as has been done in the past is $41,020. And the bid to add the little bit of landscaping you talked about is $41,420. So 400 additional dollars for the landscaping. We just need a motion for whichever one you want.
I would make a move that we take the last one that is landscaping and trimming, but give it the whole.
So we got a motion to accept the bid for $41,420, mowing, trimming, tree brush, landscape maintenance.
Doors.
Doors.
That's the word.
Doors.
You got a motion for it?
Yep.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Pose.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Appreciate the way you take care of it.
Answer it.
If you've got anything you want different, let us know. Jay's been helping me for a couple of years, so he'll be out there quite a bit. Stop by, whatever.
Get used to it, don't you?
I'm not sure.
No, it always looks really good. I appreciate you.
Thank you.
We're all pretty proud of the way it looks now.
Discuss proposed changes in fire department fees.
Chief and I have, Chief's actually presented to me changes for all the fire fees. You can see that in your packet on the computer is first how they are right now, and the second, there's a description of what the proposal is. Just to go over it, because I got some numbers here in mind. Right now, we charge, we charge $150 for vehicle fires and vehicle accidents. The proposal is to increase that to $100 to $250. And the jaws of life is also at 150, and then proposed to go up to $350 per incident. Grass fires is a little bit different than it has been in the past. If someone calls in to the dispatch center and says, we're going to do some burning, we would charge $250 if that fire got out of control. But if they did not call in to the dispatchers, we'd charge $350 for a response. In the past, those were both $150. Residential fires and residential structures would go from 500 to 1,000. And Jeff, you're saying that that stuff is going to be covered by an insurance policy?
Yeah, most of them, about 85% are covered at that $1,000 level.
Okay. So that would be a $500 increase. Commercial structure fires would go from $750 to $2,500, but then there would be some other things going on here, too. First of all, if the, if the fire exceed, a fire work exceeds two hours, and that includes following investigation, then it would be for $350 an hour, and that would be in half-hour increments. Is that right, Jeff?
Yeah, I think.
Yeah, half hour.
This one was.
It used to be 15 minutes. I think it's half hour.
Okay. At any rate, we know that commercial fires can get really costly as far as, you know, time is concerned as well as scene time is concerned. And obviously, those are going to be a lot more involved typically. That also includes replacement costs for materials and any equipment that is impacted.
Is that just scene time, Jeff, when you're talking about supposedly?
No, it's scene time because a lot of times, commercial fires, we have to set on them until whoever owns that building, their insurance agent gets there to rule it. There've been a couple of fires where they've been under suspicion, so we have to maintain that scene until they come in, the fire marshal comes in, or whoever investigates it and makes a decision.
And finally, hazmat response would go from $200 to $350. And that, is that per vehicle, Jeff, or is that just showing up for the scene? $350 per truck per hour.
Per truck per hour.
Okay. That one I wasn't sure on. So, I mean, I see it here. I was just concerned whether I got that right or not. So that'd be per truck per hour. And then $45 per firefighter per hour on a 15-minute increment after the first half hour. So in other words, the first half hour is the base, and then after that, on 15-minute increments, $45 an hour per firefighter. And then, then it also would have the replacement costs for the hazmat materials. That would be incorporated in that. This is being presented tonight by the fire department. For your consideration, if you think that this is okay, or we need to make some changes to this, let us know, and then we'll bring it back for formal approval at the next council meeting. It would become effective on July 1st.
Do you think it's consistent, the fee schedule for the hazardous material response, is that somewhat consistent with what the insurance policy is going to pay out, or?
Yeah, they're pretty much, they'll pay what we bill because hazmat is a big deal. I mean, they're on the books. And we're not, hazmat spills take a lot of time because the last big one we had is out here at South Fork. It emptied out the fire station, took every truck we had, took all of our personnel. We had to call a TUMW down for assistance, and we had to put the marshmallows and so on. We were tied up for a good six and a half, seven hours.
Yeah.
Because we didn't know what we were dealing with. So hazmat spills, they're a big deal, and the DOT gets involved, especially if whoever caused the hazmat spill didn't follow the rules, didn't have their placards on, didn't have their paperwork where it was supposed to be. And in his case, he exactly was the case. Placards weren't on. We couldn't find the paperwork. It wasn't where it was supposed to be. So, yeah, it, it's a big deal because a TUMW is going to turn around, or SER, they're going to turn around and bill them, too, you know? Outside, their charges will be a lot higher in orders.
And that's been a long time ago.
Right.
Yeah, I, to me, this isn't a money grab. This is just kind of going to start covering the bases the way we should have been, probably, don't you think?
Looks like, well, Dan, we've been talking about grass fires. They, they don't act like, you don't think they're much, but they're our biggest time consumer, and they tear up our equipment the quickest.
I'd like to see that without prior notification when it moves in. I'd like to see it at 500.
I was going to suggest 204 instead of 250 and 350.
Because there's going to be those one-offs. People call in, they're burning, and then the wind just picks up and it gets away from them. We'll, we go out and deal it. But the ones that don't call in, and the wind's blowing 25 miles an hour, they're just, or it's almost supper time, and I don't want to put this out, so I'm going to call the fire department.
But I, I think you could detear, if you raise that enough, I think you could detear some of that. I'm just going to build a line of fire and worry about it later.
It's whatever you guys.
You guys, I mean, like you always said, I mean, you tear up a lot of equipment, and that's a lot of, that's hard work putting out grass.
There's a lot of people that have to go and respond to them, but they could be avoided.
You went up the whole county on it, and you might have three going to haunt or more.
I know we've been lucky with the weather. The grass is starting to green up. So, but whatever you decide, because I'll have to turn around and take it to the trustees, and they'll have to talk, vote on it, too. But we have to have a place to start.
I'd like to see that moved to 500. The rest of it, I think, is, just to try to detear a little bit of that. But the rest of it, I think, is pretty good.
Just give us a simple motion of whatever you want to change.
Somebody else.
Has anybody got an opinion on that?
Well, then give me a motion. I'll move to accept these changes with the change of raising the without prior notice on grass fires to 500 or, they are of major pain. I hate grass fires.
All right. We got a motion to accept as is with making the change to $500 for without prior notification. Or second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Pose.
Jeff, just a question of procedure. You're going to take this to the trustees. That's going to take you a little bit, but we need to actually set the baseline here before you take that to the trustees.
That's correct.
Okay. So we'll do that at the next council meeting.
Discuss, discuss inspections.
I probably would have put these in a different order, put the housing incentives first, but if we're looking at, you know, we've talked off and on about some potential for inspections, some from safety inspections to rental inspections. And, you know, we've met with a housing inspector to get an idea of what some of the costs might be. We're also looking at spending $150,000 on new home construction, and potentially spending 3/4 of a million dollars on renovations. Seems like we ought to protect that investment. So I'm just looking to get some direction of how you would like us to go about this process, you know? Do we start with some safety inspections or some rental inspections? What makes sense?
I'd like to start with.
So an annual rental inspection?
We've talked about doing a change of.
Occupancy.
Occupancy, but I don't know that an annual, is annual going to be putting too much on you doing all the rental properties on an annual basis?
Well, there's several. And, you know, we talked about different approaches to this. So, you know, if we're looking at 300 to 400 rentals on an annual basis, it's probably a.
We do, we're going to have to bring on staff to do that, whether it's contracted, or whether we do it in-house. Could do it in-house, perhaps in the fire department, but had time to. I think the point here is, is that the fees generated should offset not just the cost of the inspection, but if we were going to do like housing inspections for new construction, we need to have permits that add some value to them also for inspection. Right now, our new house permit is 10 bucks, 25 bucks. Oh, okay. You have a lot of, you have a lot of code concerns related to that, but then it also begs the question, in case of new housing, is this what kind of code you want to talk about? We haven't had new construction and housing for quite some time, and, you know, if the city is going to incentivize new house construction, are we going to be satisfied with the work that's being done, that inspection, if we really have the best interest of it? So that's, that's kind of what's out here.
And electric already governed by a state code?
That's the only thing that's out there. It's.
Carbon, electricals.
But that's new construction. I mean, I know some properties that's been remodeled in town that are not owner-occupied, that have not been inspected, that should have been, because there's ways around that program.
Technically, plumbing is also state-licensed, and.
Plumbing's licensed, the HVAC is licensed, but it's not inspected.
Right.
You have to have licensing, but they don't require any inspection.
And there are state, minimal state code requirements, like energy efficiency, you have to technically blow, unglowed or you have to get a fork on new construction, but if nobody's out there checking it, you know?
So what's, I think, oh, go ahead, go ahead. I, I just, what's our objective by doing these inspections?
So I think there's, I, from my perspective, and I think, I'll speak a little bit for the party just because I've heard them talk about it. We know that there are safety concerns that, that aren't being addressed, from no smoke alarms to no fire extinguishers, and just potential for real tragedy, right? You'd like to put that, that's one. Two, if we're going to invest in homes, then do we want to make sure that the homes being built are of a certain. built are of a certain quality or...
Structure.
Right, and that's just being frugal with the tax dollars, I guess is how I was thinking of it, but that's why we're having this discussion, maybe on lock base, and...
Yeah. I feel like if we're, if we're going to go down this road, we're going to have to get, we're going to have to get a group of guys together to come up with some recommendations that we can look at, instead of just starting as a broad-range thing.
Would you like to form a committee?
I, I wouldn't like to, no, I wouldn't like to be on one, I wouldn't like to form one, but I might protest being involved in one, but I, I think we have to start somewhere, right? So, there's been concerns voiced in rental properties, okay, and, so, I have some rental properties, and I'm not really concerned that my properties are going to have deficiencies, but a licensing or a inspection is going to be a fee, and if I get charged a fee to do that, I'll pass that on to my renter, right? So that's just part of doing business, so that I don't have a problem with that. But I think we need to look at maybe doing something that's not super intensive to start with and work our way up, so maybe we need to figure out a phased system for rentals, and then for new houses, if, if we go forward with new construction incentives, these houses should pass some, some stringent...
I think if we have city incentives, yes, they need to be held to a certain standard.
Yeah, I think we're talking about, I think there's two different sets of rules.
Yeah.
Let me break it down a little bit, so, in the next slides, I've listed, and I shared some with you, just some things that other cities have put in there for rules on housing incentives, and that touches a little bit on construction methods or requirements, not a lot, but a little bit. And a lot of cities have adopted, you know, the state building code in order to have just a baseline, but I think on, if you just, let's assume that there were three hundred rental units, right, and if you were to do an annual inspection that was a walkthrough to make sure they had smoke alarms and fire alarms, and, you know, let's say it's going to take you a half an hour to an hour per home, by the time you make the appointment, show up, and do the walkthrough, fill out a piece of paper, let's call it an hour, and it's three hundred, so there's three hundred hours dedicated to that. Just, I'm just trying to give you some basis for where we might, what it might cost, and then what that fee structure might have to be, you know, so, you know, three hundred hours is one-sixth of a full-time employee, if that's all they, if that, if it was just walking through and checking smoke alarms and fire extinguishes, for example. And are there other things, Jeff, that you've seen that you think need, I mean, we can come up with that list, but is there anything just obvious that exits and...
Well, exits, saw a house used, an extension cord come out of an electrical box, came through a hole in the wall, went around the house, round the cement steps, down into the basement to the sun pump, that was its electrical source, and we got called there for a fire that was in the wall, we found the cord, and the mice have been chewing on it. That was just one, it happened to be the same house, that there was an open electrical socket with the bare wire sticking out within reach of the three-year-old that was running around.
Yeah, I mean, I think we can, with a small group of folks, we could come up with some standards that would be, that wouldn't be so stringent that it would cause a big...
Well, here's some other ammunition for you, by having building inspections, or just the rental inspections in place, or some type of guidelines, it's going to help with your ISO rating, or maintain it, we're already as low as we can go.
Right.
But it's going to help maintain it. The other thing is, building materials, back when we were all younger, and we built houses, we used real wood, we used plot, used tuba fours, tuba sixes, real construction materials, now they're using lightweight trusses, it used to take a house fifteen to twenty minutes to get fully engulfed, and now with some of these lightweight trusses, we're seeing houses going up in about seven, we can't get there fast enough. It takes us a majority of five to seven minutes to get to the station, get dressed, so, you know, it's whatever you decide, but there's some, I'm not saying every rental's deficient or has problems, a lot, there's a lot of good landlords out there, we're just, I don't know, we've been unfortunate enough, we've been finding some bad ones.
And maybe after our first pass-through, we'll find that we don't have to do it every year, maybe it can be a bi-annual.
I think it's a growing program, I think, you may have to take bigger steps.
What kind of a fee are you thinking for the, an inspection?
Well, let's say it takes, I, so, the person we talked to, it was a little more involved than doing just a quick safety inspection, and they were looking at, in the neighborhood of a hundred to a hundred and twenty-five, so, let's say if we could get a short, a shortened list, could we get between fifty and seventy-five dollars? I mean, I think that's something we could...
You're not going to get anybody to do it for under a hundred bucks a house.
Well, I would have a hundred dollars out of line, although I do think you better figure on a second visit for any deficiencies found. Maybe not at the full rate, but...
But then if you go back to that second rate, there could be a second time to get it, there could be a fine to cover it.
They like, the electrical inspection is twenty-five dollars, if they find something, and they come back, they charge you again to come back, if they got it fixed, maybe there's no fee, but if they didn't, then you're going to charge them again to come back again.
I would like to see it start out with rental properties and stuff that's receiving city money incentives, to help do a standard move, we'll go from there, maybe.
Gail, when we talk about housing inspections for new construction, do we get into trouble by just focusing that on those building inspections on, on new construction versus remodeling? Or is that, can we just...
I mean, I think you can do that as part of your building process, um, you know, the, I'm just flipping through a lot of different places, like the Kama Woods does their rentals every three years, as opposed to every year, and so, you know, they're on a schedule that you can pull up. In terms of remodeling, yeah, I don't know, do we have a permit that we require for that now?
Only if they change the structure.
Yeah.
That doesn't imply changes to electricity or plumbing, I mean...
Right.
We really don't inspect that.
At, at our lake properties, if you do, if you search your house, you almost have to do all those things, so, yeah, I think it kind of depends on what scheme you want to set up, and then trying to figure out how you're going to...
I mean, if we prioritize, if, if we prioritize, if we prioritize new construction.
Yes.
We, we, we don't get into trouble if we don't prioritize, if you will, remodels, major additions, stuff like that.
I haven't given that any thought, but I can imagine that you would, I mean, as long as you articulated your purpose in doing it, and, but then you get that question, why, why one, not the other, because if you're going to spend forty thousand dollars doing a total kitchen remodel that changes gas lines and water lines and electrical, why are you, why are you not looking at that as closely as some of the other things?
Let's just take about easing into it, rather than taking the whole plunge.
Well, if the concern is rentals and, and some of the safety issues, clearly that's the easy one that you can bite off, and then it's a question of how much, how often, and who's going to do it.
So, I know we've got three contractors of various sorts sitting on the council and mayor, planning on knocking on your doors and saying, what do you, how do you want to get started, and we can come back to you with some ideas, but obviously you have more expertise than I do, so...
I think he's got a list.
I got a list of people.
All right.
To possibly get together first, and maybe come up with a different, with a plan.
Okay.
You, Gary, myself, fire chief, John, and Scott. Does that sound okay up there?
I think that sounds like a grand committee, I'll make that as a motion and a recommendation.
You need to be quick about that.
You want to include any...
Since you're not a drill.
Do you have any input, or any, is there any safety hazard you see?
Yeah, I mean, there's several houses.
Well, we'll put you on there, too.
Do you want to include any of the men that are, do you want to include anything like carpenters or rental owners?
Well, I think if we get together, and then the, the group can grow.
We'll have public hearings.
And we'll have public hearings, and we can get what people to do it, but I think, to start with, I think we need to get this started to...
Right, should we, should we, as, as this committee, should we invite landlords and contractors to the meeting to just solicit?
Is that, I think the second meeting, I think the first meeting, we kind of need to get a, some kind of a basis set, like what we're thinking, and then get input on, kind of like we do our ordinance system, I think that's kind of how we need to get it started, because fire chief will have stuff, we'll have ideas, and then, because I, I don't like just picking out renters, renters, we've got a lot of other older dilapidated houses and people, whatever, that we probably have the same problem with that aren't rentals, so, you know, I hate this, I mean, I know rental property is an issue, but I hate to just single them out a hundred percent, but...
I think we ought to get something pretty quick, when we're sitting here looking at the funding incentives for new and remodeling, that it comes along with it, that it needs to come up meat, steak, code, and...
Right.
I think we'll put that, that will fall under the housing incentive program. The, don't you think the...
The codes.
The codes for the housing incentive fall under the housing, and if we want to add remodeling to that, I mean, I think we should, you want to go into your slide?
But then if the motion started...
There's a motion for these people, including the police chief, to be on a committee to talk about rental and dilapidated housing inspections.
Great.
Do I have a second?
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Discuss housing incentives.
All right, give me just a second, I'm going to pull this up so we can kind of see what's going on here. So, I know y'all have kind of a long document that I shared with you, and I'm going to, this is going to be a little painful, because if we're going to get something done quickly, I need you to actually give me very specific indirect feedback, okay?
Yep.
So the first page, I tried to capture what Gary and Wiggy came up with, and I've talked to them both, and both of them said, well, I think maybe you've got it right, so I want to just get some verification here. The way I understood it was, we're looking at, if it's, if it's going into an existing TIF district, we would give fifteen thousand dollars cash, and if it's going outside of the existing TIF district, it's ten thousand dollars cash and three years of the municipal side of the property tax abatement. And, and there's some examples, but the bottom line here is kind of, if it's in a TIF district, it's about fifteen thousand dollars, well, it is fifteen thousand dollars, if it's outside of a TIF district, it's going to vary a little bit, hovering around fifteen thousand dollars, depending on the size and value of the home. I don't, we don't need you to tell me for sure, but I need to know if that's on the mark for where you guys are thinking, it doesn't have to be for sure tonight, but that, next time around, I want to get the number nailed down. So, ten thousand dollars has been kind of a cap in other communities, but we also haven't had in ten years, what, two, three homes built within city limits, it's not even a lot.
I was going to ask if we can make this retroactive to about fourteen years.
So, I, I won't, I mean, unless you guys have feedback right now, I'm going to keep moving.
Keep moving.
All right. So, some other incentives that have been looked at, I want you to look at these, because some of them might be a way to, to add some incentive without a tremendous amount of cost. One of the things we talked about is the idea from the Housing 360 program that came to town and talked about this, they talked about trying to get employers to provide some incentive, I know that we've had one, maybe two employers in town that are interested in doing this, because they'd like to get some of their employees to locate closer to their occupation sites, right? So we'll continue to work on that, and there's also, I think, Dan, the mayor has been working, has had some discussion with the county, and they may be doing something separate but equal to.
That is out.
Right, so it won't be this...
The county's going to do, they're going to come up with a county-wide program.
Tax abatement?
I think that's probably what they're looking at, some sort of a tax abatement, that's going to be a county-wide program, they're going to handle it all themselves, they're going to have the application, so we won't have, it won't affect, I mean, it'll be additional to what we have if they do something, but there's nothing concrete right now, but there will, they're trying to come up with something.
Some other things that we could do, if we decide we wanted to, some, you know, for example, the pool, or the pass, or the mutually centered pass, I mean, those might just be a great thing to do, to help bring a new family to town and say, and, and maybe, if they get a free year, they'll re-up for following years, right? So, look through those when you get a chance, if there's anything that strikes your fancy, let's figure out how, what we want to do with it. This is really where I would like the discussion tonight, and when we talked about what kind of requirements do we want, so what I'm going to do, I'm going to go through these one by one.
Thumbs up.
Yep.
Okay.
Sorry.
Where's our stickers?
Right, right on the end of your...
I'll make notes, so, property must be within city limits, I mean, that's an assumption, unless we get another situation, somebody's right next to the city limits wants to join, would we?
That was the last one.
Even if they want to annex, I'm saying.
That's later now.
Yeah, you've got that in here.
All right, so that's a yes, property must be in city limits, new construction, I'm assuming that's a yes, all right, owner-occupied primary residence at the time of construction. I've got mixed here.
Write it down.
All right.
You said you were counting.
All right, all right, very good.
There.
Hold on.
What was you, up or down?
I was up.
Okay, so this.
Three, two.
One, five.
I'll do it, just give me a second.
Here, do you want another sheet, she can copy.
I'm, I'm trying to figure out how to, I can't type at the same time.
Yeah, there's this old thing called a paper.
I know, I did print.
Can you leave that?
I got one.
You got the printed one?
Okay, good, that'll work, okay. We can, that's what we prefer, when you see ups or downs.
Just do the number of ups.
Number of ups.
You know, there's five of us, so...
Three ups on the third one is what I got.
Okay.
There's six of them, I'm, I'm watching the mayor's thumb, too.
Okay.
Okay. Property owner must not have received assistance from a third party, such as a first-time homebuyer program, do you care about that?
No.
One up, one up. Uh, property owners are not eligible for the benefit more than once in a lifetime.
Hmm.
Two ups.
I don't know. More than once in a lifetime, I got to think about that.
Well, okay, so, if we can discuss that one real quick, you know, if this picks up, people that haven't applied should take precedence over folks that...
I would say that. I'm not saying you don't take precedence over somebody that already has.
Yeah, okay.
But if you got a guy that's going to build a new house every two years, and turn around and flip it, or something like that.
If somebody else...
He's in tax phase.
Yeah, if somebody else isn't going to get kicked out for it, then I would...
But if you got a guy that's gonna build a new house every two years and turn around and flip it or something like that.
If somebody else.
He's in a tax phase.
Yeah, if somebody else isn't gonna get kicked out for it, then I would be okay with that, so.
Give me the thumbs again. Can't do it twice, can you do it twice, yes or no?
No, it's the man who's getting his mind locked.
One up, alright, I'm giving you a one up on that one. Incentive, uh, doesn't apply to additions, remodeling, or construction of accessory structures.
Agreed, not at the time, right?
Yeah, this is what we're starting with, right? So, that's a yes, I've got all ups there. Multi-family units, yes or no?
Understand that.
Three plus, three plus.
It says it's not eligible, right?
Not eligible, so they're all down, alright, very good. Based on available funding, I'm assuming that's a yes. Payment will be, will be made only to the owner of record?
Sure.
Yeah.
Okay. Won't be granted if there are any outstanding charges or violations against the property?
They're not even gonna get a permit. They won't even get a permit.
Right, yeah, right. Yep.
If the permit guy.
Sometimes it's just good to state that out there.
Yeah.
Uh, another one, if there are no money available, uh, only building permits for new single, two family, single family and two family residential dwelling units issued after January first of twenty nineteen? What's your, what's your concern there, Scott?
You're saying that only, that only single?
Single and two family, so wherever you said three plus are out, so duplexes and single family.
How many, whoa, whoa, go back to three, what did you say, how many thumbs down did you have?
I thought everybody was thumbs down on a multi-family.
I don't, you're saying are not eligible.
Well, not eligible, so you want everybody eligible.
We want them eligible.
Alright.
That's the reason I'm saying thumbs down on this one.
Got you.
You worded your own.
I know.
Why are you, we can't even understand?
I took lessons.
Well, they're trick questions.
So, I say that, um.
So, you want multi-family, that's a yes.
Well, but, but what you're saying though is, is that because they have to be for occupied, you're talking about condominiums.
Well, they were down on the owner occupied.
Oh, okay.
Well, there was mixed, there were more down than up, okay, so if you want multi-family, give me a thumbs up. Three plus units. I got three up, okay. So, now, let's going back down to, let's not talk about single family or two family, let's just say the date. Start date of January first, if you started or are going to build after January, if you started January first, you're eligible.
What if you started before January?
That's the, that's the question. If you started January first of this year or after, you're eligible.
We got one. That started last fall. It's not finished. We have Danny Good Street. Adams, we have to spec home. It's all concrete, it's kind of a, a little bit different deal.
Yes or no?
I don't know how you go back track.
Well, if he applies, it's, you know, so later we're gonna talk about when we make the payment and if the payment is made at the time of occupancy, then I think you can make the case that that would work here.
Either if, if you build a spec home, it won't be the contractor that gets the incentive, it will be the owner at the time of purchase.
So, you're giving the incentive to the person that buys the property?
Okay.
The owner of record and if we say at the time of occupancy, then it'll go to the person that will buy the house. And in this case, if, if it's a spec home, it's already started, I think you could be okay because we're not giving the incentive until the home is occupied by the owner.
I can see that.
Okay, I agree.
It makes a difference whether it's a spec home or.
So, you want the home date, the start date to have been prior to January first is what I'm hearing.
So, if we're going that route, you gotta take the multi-family dwellings out and put them in a whole different category because you can't wait till they're occupied and then give each of them a third.
Those the owners of them.
So, there you gotta give it to the owner, if you gotta give it to the person building it, here on the spec type home, you're giving it to the person that buys the house that's gonna live in it. But you can't do that on a multi-family.
We're saying owner of record, once it's occupied, so if it's a multi-family and I own it, I don't get the money until it's occupied. I still own it, I still get the money, but it doesn't happen until there's people in it.
So, then on a. But on a single family, like a spec home. They don't get it till it's owner occupied, so does the money go to the person buying the house or does it go to the person building the house?
Goes to the person.
Benefits is some longer. Either way, we're gonna, either way, we're gonna get a new house built.
I know, but we gotta find out, we're not gonna give it to the owner of one building and the, the guy that builds it on one property and the guy that buys it on an different property, that's what we're doing.
First of all, you don't wanna do it for rent, you wanna do it for condo.
It's gotta be owner, it's gotta be owned, but I'm saying if you build a mall, a three family dwelling and when he gets all three of them full, then you're gonna give the money to the person that built it.
If he owns it still, unless he sold it to somebody else.
Okay, but on a spec house.
Right.
You're wanting to give it to the person that buys it that's gonna be the owner occupied, you're not giving an incentive to the person building it, that's just the opposite.
So, then it still incentivizes the person building it because he's gonna be able to realize a higher return on that property.
Let me see if I can clarify. I don't think you guys have settled the question of owner occupied only. All I'm saying is, when it's occupied, you give it to whoever owns it at that time. We're not saying that it has to be owner occupied or it couldn't be a rental, just when it's occupied, the owner at that time gets the money. Gary's shaking his head.
I'm thinking about a big loophole.
What?
And that is, is that if, say a builder builds a threeplex condo, first one gets sold. Okay, everything's good, goes with that owner, they're staying there. Second one gets sold, okay, and it stays here, couldn't get the third one sold, gets his buddy to buy it, he gets the number, sells it right back to the owner. Fix it around. Do you want a rental unit like that?
We need to take, this needs to be for single family owner occupied or spec homes. We need to take the two and three family out of this and have them be a, they need to be their own significance, if somebody wants to build a threeplex, come to us with your plan and we'll come up with incentive.
Agreed, yes.
So, let's take, get rid of anything more than single family, whether it's spec home or owner occupied.
So, no duplexes.
No duplexes, no.
Single families, standalone homes.
Yes.
And you don't care who owns them.
Right.
Right now.
I don't care who builds it.
Somebody wants to do something else, they can bring it to us for.
I don't care who builds it, when it's sold and occupied, that's when we decide who's gonna get it.
That's the first thing. You might, when, if, when you get a, a two or three deal come in to, I don't know whether you can handle.
Then we might, so Stan.
Might be able to handle the covenants that way for sure.
But I, we're getting it too complicated.
Well, I agree.
The family, multi-family thing.
Yeah.
Alright, so.
Keep it single.
Single family and you get the money, the owner.
With the CO.
Right, and the certificate of occupancy.
Yep.
The owner at that time gets the money.
Okay.
All clear?
No.
What about the same loophole Gary was talking about, though?
We didn't say whether it was a rental or not, we're just.
No, like he was talking, you sell it to your buddy, you get the incentive, you turn around and.
You gotta take a risk somewhere.
Yeah.
You gotta build.
Right, well, we're not saying you can't rent it.
Here's the thing, once it's occupied, it's on the tax roll.
Right.
That's what we're at.
I just, okay.
Actually, before that.
Well, that's the thing. Before you even drive a nail.
I still need the date.
On the date.
Let's leave it at January one because. It's, it's occupied, it's, anything that's been built before isn't occupied, so it's, it's occupied after.
This, this thing says issued, building permits issued, right? So, anything that's had a building permit issued prior to January first of this year won't be eligible as this is written.
Then you got one that's sticking up. So, do you wanna make?
The exception.
For the one? Yeah, I just started here. I just go by occupied. New home occupied.
But the permit was sold before and he wants to know if we're gonna allow that one or not. Let's come back on that one, that's, that's one thing.
Okay, yeah, so that's right, okay.
Okay, keep going.
Cash incentives will be in the form of a forgivable loan provided to the owner of record owner after the signing date of the construction permit. So, we actually want to change that to occupancy, right, when the CO is issued.
It's gonna be a forgivable loan?
Well, that, I'm just pulling other samples here and you have the loan to be forgiven at the rate of thirty-three percent per, per year of the original recipient's occupancy of the home.
No, I think it ought to just be the money that goes to the, to the owner.
So, you give the cash at the time of occupancy and we're done, we don't think about it again.
That's right. That's the incentive, otherwise they don't get an incentive.
They, they've made their investment, we're getting taxes from it.
Okay, so that's a down, is that a, give me the, get, get back to the tradition here, okay. Okay, then the next one says incentive will be paid, made at the time the certificate of occupancy is issued.
Bill Max said the last one, I, we just need to take the second sentence out of that.
But you don't want it to be a forgivable loan, you just wanna give them cash, I mean, that's what I heard. It's a grant, it's not a loan.
You know, wait a minute, you gotta word it properly. Cause you, there's certain things you can't, it's gotta be in the form of a forgivable loan or otherwise they gotta claim an escrow.
I'm gonna defer to someone else on this.
Still, still income, he looks forgivable. And you're, you're still. Yes, it's gonna be. Dan, you're referring to what they were talking about at the end, usually, I, I remember them saying.
You're gonna have to look this one up.
Yeah.
So, look into that one more.
Alright.
Okay.
Either way, you want, you're not trying to claw back, you're just saying you wanna make sure they don't get taxed, that there's a way around it, that's what I'm hearing.
That's right.
Okay. And we're still gonna do it at the time the certificate of occupancy is issued, right?
Yep.
Um, which means, by the way, we have to have some.
C of O is the sign of it. You can have this code for that C of O.
Yep.
Um, must be sixteen hundred square feet or larger, do you care about size?
Get rid of that whole paragraph.
Well, if we do a six hundred square foot, though, I.
We've already got a dollar amount.
Your spec home again, that's small. Your spec home is not gonna, if, if you're doing a hundred fifty thousand dollar house, you're not gonna do a hundred and sixteen hundred, you gotta get, you're not gonna get, what, what, what do you think? Hundred and twenty bucks?
Hundred and twenty-five to a hundred and fifty dollars a square foot.
When you said we already have a dollar amount, what do you mean?
You've got the numbers up there for the.
That was just an example of what your, what it, what your tax abatement value might be.
Twelve hundred square foot is a hundred and twenty-five dollars.
What you have to spend.
At a hundred fifty thousand. And that's, about as cheap as you're gonna get built.
A hundred buck and four.
Can we get three bedrooms? You don't have to say three.
It can be a two.
No, but I mean, point being is it's the standard for three, get three for about a hundred.
Yeah.
Do you want to put twelve hundred on your list?
I'd change that to twelve.
So, it must be twelve hundred square feet.
Of living space and I wouldn't worry about.
All the rest.
The rest of, I don't think.
Thumbs up, everybody. Two clean.
Must be completed within twenty-four months of the application approval?
Twelve.
What if it goes thirteen?
You gotta pay back at a rate of a thousand dollar thing.
Completed as though that they're living in it?
Well, my, my assumption is that we issue the certificate of occupancy to say that it's completed.
And the people that are going to finance this will not be, I mean, they'll be moving in.
Well, you're construct, I mean, if somebody does a construction loan, they're only, only get for six or eight months. And then they re-up them. Here's the thing, when you, if you're talking spec homes, it's an incentive for them to get a federal, too.
That's true.
And you don't want somebody to, I'd just like to see it twelve months. If you have bad weather or something comes up or there's anything that says that you can't, you give a little bit of a barrier.
There's no reason why you can't get a house done.
I mean, you can build a house in three months.
Yeah, you can. Some of them go for ever, seems like, well, that's still.
Well, probably we don't want that.
Alright, so, the changes must be completed within twelve months of the application approval, thumbs up or down?
Okay.
Alright.
Does that include spec homes? Since you have to.
Yep.
Danny asked a question, are we talking about the incentive application or the permit, building permit application?
The incentive application.
Right, do we wanna tie that to the building permit in any way?
I think your building permit.
Aren't they gonna probably fill them both out at the same time?
Well, only if we tell, I mean.
Why wouldn't a building?
Here's the thing.
The incentive permit should, the building permit should be just right included with it.
Well, it may be, but if, you know, you're starting a timeline, you might put in the building permit, cause it takes two years to expire and then you can wait a year and put in the building.
Only if you start.
Right, you have to start within ninety days and then it takes two years to expire, so you could start and then put in your application for the incentive a year later and now you're at twenty-four months.
It's only from the later time.
I think this is gonna be its own significant.
Okay.
Well, you can't put twelve months on one thing and then put two, twenty-four months on something.
I say of the application. I'm trying to think of this exposure for the spec home builder in this case, if you cut it too short.
Incentive application.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, no, I, I, I agree, because they may not, they might get their CO, right? They may get their CO.
Right.
But they, they may not have, so here's the scenario, you've got a spec home builder, he comes, builds a home, he gets a CO, puts the house up for sale, takes a while to get it sold. Whenever they, you know, so if it's over a year, that's not gonna put that new homeowner out to, for the incentive, does it?
You don't wanna, you don't wanna stick it to the spec home builder either.
No, you don't wanna stick it to either one of them, because we're, the whole thing is to get housing, right?
Unless you make it, our spec home certificate of completion.
Where are we doing it now? We've talked about, you get paid, we've talked about two different payments, when it's occupied or when the certificate of occupancy is issued. We've talked about both of those.
Maybe it ought to be certificate of completion instead of occupancy.
Is there such?
You could do, yeah, you could do it, if you're gonna do an inspection process, when all the inspection processes hand in there paperwork that says, okay, electrical's passed inspection, the plumbing's passed, the. Heating and cooling is passed, the building's passed, to where it is occupiable.
Right, isn't that what the.
Nobody, yes.
Of occupancy is, is saying this can be occupied?
Yes.
Doesn't mean that it will be.
Right, it just, so that's why I'm saying, do we issue it once we've said you can occupy it or do we issue it once it has been occupied?
Once it can be occupied.
Once it can be occupied.
Since we're taking out the.
Because once it's occupied and you give out the whatever, it's on the.
There you go.
It's up, they're starting, they gotta start making payments on, I mean, it's hitting the tax roll, I mean, it's.
Here's, here's, here's one of those what if kind of loophole deals, now builders, builders got this thing, it's been on it for eighteen months now. Because I gotta move in there because, you know, I can cover my costs if I move in. Now, soon as he sells, you know, he's out of there, but I mean, that, that happens. Spec home builders wind up living in the house they built sometime and then you get a guy, I started questioning, what's the definition of building? Or rather, living in it, because they might have two houses, but who knows? We can move in until he's got a certificate of occupancy, right? Yeah, but let's say he's completed certificate of occupancy, he doesn't have it sold.
We don't care, because it's.
We don't care.
He's paying taxes on it.
We're giving, so we're giving it to him.
Yeah, because he's the owner of it.
Off the certificate of occupancy, that's where we're getting them, just hoping he'll pass it on to the.
Pass it on to the.
Pass it on to the.
He won't, but he could.
Well, I mean, the point is, is it's gone.
Are you incentivizing the builder, are you incentivizing the new homeowner?
I guess I'm incentivizing the builder. Cause he's the one. If I got a guy that comes to town, wants to pay taxes on it. Ten, two hundred thousand dollar homes to take a chance on selling, that's the guy we need to incentivize.
So the first.
Cause he's putting them on the tax market.
I mean, I, I, I'm trying to figure out, you know, if we're trying to build for people moving in, or the builders?
I wanna.
There's no place for people to move in right now.
I wanna incentivize anybody that'll build a house. Anybody that'll build a house, I wanna incentivize them.
But there's some reason why all the builders can't build his own house.
That's true.
He ain't gonna get nothing in twelve months, cause he's working on somebody else.
Alright. Program is valid for contractors or owners using contractors that are licensed, in good standing with the state, and are bonded and insured. That may only make some folks around here.
What's the, what's the name?
I like it. I like it.
That's good by you, I'm glad.
I didn't put it out there, but I like it.
I, I need a, I need a yes, no.
Aren't you? You're bonded. You have to be bonded. You're coming through one.
I don't think so.
Oh, I bet you have.
Were you insured?
I'm insured.
I got six million. I got plenty insurance. I only see one thumb at the moment. Give me those thumbs again. Read that, say it again. It's valid for contractors or owners using contractors that are licensed, in good standing with the State Builders Association, who are licensed, bonded, and insured.
That's from foundation, well, all the way through, or? State Builders Association. I think you can strike that. Cause I'm not listed with a state builder, I have two master's licenses in the state.
You got contractors licensed.
Yep.
Bonded and insured. Licensed, bonded, insured.
Yep.
That's what we want. One more time, or you want to contract? Alright, good, thanks. Home must be in the city limits of Bloomfield or annexed in the city part of incentive payment. Alright.
You guys all okay with that?
Where are we at?
I, I, I went down and back, right? So that, that was the last one on the first page, and then I, we, we already did the program is valid for contractors, which is the first one on the second page. Now we're going on the.
First come, first served?
First come, first served.
Hold on, he missed, hold on, back up, cause he missed that.
Would I just vote yes?
Hold on, hold on. You missed the one about must be in the city limits.
We've asked that question.
Did you say yes?
Yes.
Okay. Second item, second page. Second item, second page. Amounts are reserved on a first come, first served basis. Incentive amounts are reserved for each project at the time the incentive application is approved. They're returned to the general pool if the project is disqualified or not completed by the completion date. Or there is an option to extend it.
Let's scratch that portion of that.
There's no opportunity to, if there's a tornado and wipes out the house, you're not gonna give them another shot?
Yeah, start over. How to get another building?
I, I wanna keep it on there. I wanna keep it on there.
Right.
I wanna give it, I wanna give it the opportunity if something happens or is extenuating circumstances. I want the opportunity to be there.
It still has to be approved. Okay, so give me a thumbs up or thumbs down on item number two? Five up. Can we change the administrator to council? Do you want every, honestly, really want every project coming in front of the council to ask that?
No, we don't.
I would like, if we're gonna do that one, I would like that one to come to, for us to make.
To make that kind of exception.
Well, okay, let me ask you this. Are they gonna be approved by the council? Are they gonna be approved through the application process and in front of the, I mean, the way we do these things now, the way I would assume that it's gonna happen, and in the application processes, they fill out the application, they'll go through, just like a building permit, I'll process it, make sure everything's in line, check off the box to approve it. Now, if they come back and ask for an, an exception, then is that one you want to go in front of the council? Or do we have some parameters that we've set up?
I think we need to just, I think we need to be aware of.
I don't think we need to, to look at every single one that's coming in.
I'm not saying, no, we don't need to look at all of them, but the exceptions.
If they want an exception to the, to the.
I think we set guidelines.
We're gonna have exceptions and guidelines.
Here's the deal. We need to have a clear, a clear understanding of, of why we do exceptions. It's, we're not gonna do exceptions because they're our friend and we like them. We're gonna do exceptions because there's specific.
Circumstances.
A specific need or circumstance that caused them to not be able to fulfill during.
And that can be left up to the city administrator. You know, my suggestion on this is, is let the city administrator do it, but if the person is not accepting, I think you can appeal it to the council.
There you go.
I'll deal with that.
Okay.
Don't block it.
So I got five ups on that, just so you know.
Two downs.
Uh, all projects have to comply with federal, state, and local codes. Go ahead. If it's, if the home is not owner occupied within a year of the C of, CO, fifty percent of the funds must be returned to the city of Bloomfield.
Out, what funds?
Whatever we've.
Incentive.
Incentive.
They're paying taxes on it anyway.
Right, I, based on everything else you've said, I'd strike this.
Yeah, right, yeah. Cause you, you're given the date of time.
Payments of the cash, or payments are made, of the, of the cash portion will be made within thirty days of the CO.
Yep.
Yeah.
Uh, new homes must have a radon abatement system installed and be actively marketed from the time the foundation is constructed.
Why do you need that?
You don't know if there's radon in there, so you don't need it unless.
And it gets tested.
So that's a no.
Yeah, that's a no.
Okay. Uh, valid for single-family speculative homes, we've all said yes to that already. Home, home value must be greater than a hundred and sixty thousand.
I think we're a hundred fifty. Twelve hundred square feet.
Twelve hundred square feet, with something, hundred fifty thousand.
Hundred and fifty, okay.
I don't know that you need that.
We just need the.
Net land value? I think it's real expensive. I mean, net of land, land value's gonna be high.
Okay, yes or no? Up or down?
I think just a square feet is enough.
Oh, no. You could get really crappy value constructions.
Not if it's inspected. It won't pass.
Well, you can do it incredibly cheap. A piece of junk.
But how?
Well, I mean, if you use poor materials, you, you got terrible taste on color.
Pink, pink shade carpet.
The way, the way you lay the house.
I was thinking of the wall. Let's go into the next one for just a second, we'll come back. I got four percent battery left.
Okay.
Homes must adhere to currently adopted Iowa State White Residential Energy Code. By the way, that's already state law, so you better say yes to that.
Yeah.
Alright, so, hundred and sixty thousand, yes or no?
No. I'm gonna say no on a hundred and sixty. I mean, maybe we can come up with a different body, but.
Okay, cash? Should there be a cash floor, yes or no?
Cash floor.
Should there be a cash floor of any kind, yes or no?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, sure.
Hundred and forty? Hundred and fifty? Don't want some.
Yeah.
Hundred and fifty, okay. Sold.
Hundred and fifty is, is, is one twenty-five a square foot for twelve months?
It's a hundred and twenty-five dollars a square foot. You're not, you can't build one for, I mean, even using.
If, if you're.
If I do it myself.
If you do it yourself, you might, but it's.
It doesn't, you don't have to turn in the receipts.
Yeah. They're gonna value.
They're gonna value it anyway. You're not gonna hide anything. So it's gonna be, it's off the tax value, it's not off of, you don't bring all your receipts, and you owe, you owe six, seven, five thousand.
Yeah, we know that might be a high number, though, because success valuations are a little bit less than what an actual construction value is.
Well, I think we got through a lot.
I think.
Might have.
I think they can, she can give you that number. It may not be the number that she uses, but.
I mean, it's gonna be valued, the level of value up to, you can use the bank, bank loan value. They'll have a value.
Cool, let's move on.
We'll, we'll, yeah, we'll, 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 it's not bringing back, right?
Yep, yes. So, maybe you can throw something together and try to get it shared to us, and we can all look at it and comment back and forth a few times before our next meeting, so we have consensus. I mean, we don't have to hammer it out completely, but we can still banter things back and forth. If there's something that's an outlier, let's get those called to our attention, and we can all weigh in on.
Sure, you're all mine.
Will do. Thank you very much for your help. I'm being patient here, Dan. She's got a bit. Probably ask her if you. Chief Flaff, he won the rescue.
Alright, consider discussing electrical lead position.
I put that one on there. Uh, of course, you know, we have the retirement, Dennis Harvers, who had positions open. And we did, we have to post that internally, and we had one internal posting. And of course, issues arise about within the ten mile radius of Bloomfield. So, I know we changed the gas position for that, so I just wanna see what your guys' recommendations are on, far as the job summary and changing that residency requirement, if there is one or not.
Was that where we changed it to a certain time, not mileage?
That was done for the gas job. It was thirty minutes.
But we moved it to twenty-five. On call. Just for on-call, for gas.
There's a, in, in the personnel manual, there's a residency requirement you should likewise, and I'm asking for you all to address, but the thing here is, is that there has been traditionally a residency, not a in-city residency, but close proximity for, they had an electric because of response. Response time, that was comparable to what we have for these here fire teams. So the question is, is that gonna be the standard? Candidly, we have an applicant that is way past that limitation of ten miles. Alright, back to the pilot, somebody that we got, any? Forty-seven miles.
And that's, what's the standard for electric on brief? Response time?
An hour, I U V's hour?
We have somebody on call, I would imagine. What, what if somebody's on call? What's their response time requirement?
That's what you, that's what I'm saying. That could be a change to this.
What, what if they're now?
What is now?
If somebody's on call for electric now, what, how soon do they have to respond if they get called out?
There's no standard.
There's no standard, okay.
I mean, it's, we're kinda the same thing. Yeah, so that would be the thing here, if we wanna get rid of the residency requirement, she doesn't have to live within ten miles. But on-call must be responding within half hour, you know, whatever the, like, verbal gas or whatever. I mean, and that person, while they're on call, can choose to live with a friend, or be here, you know, stay at the firehouse. I'm, I'm just saying, I'm just throwing, you know, throwing things out there, you know, or get a hotel for that week while they're on call.
Yeah, I mean, the point being is, is this would be very difficult for someone that's beyond the response time, because you're on call for fifteen weeks.
And then, and the issue too, of course, being an electrical lineman, the difference is go hot, you have to apply to people rules. So, basically, distribution is only two. And so basically, this, even if the other person should be on call every other week, you're probably still gonna get called in to do this. And we were, we were called in twice last weekend, so, I mean, on average, we're called in, uh, I don't have the number quite frequently for that. So.
Can we change it to a, a time figure instead of a mileage figure?
It'd be tough to. I think an hour.
On this one, I'd say an hour. I mean, if there's a power line down, police and fire can isolate it. It's not like gas line, if you got a gas leak, then you have an explosion hazard.
The service concern is up for two. I don't know what the citizen's standard would be, but I know that you got electric outage, folks get real heated about that. Gas is, couldn't be pre-localized, and you got a power outage, it could be.
You, could just.
It's not.
And just not to, you know, electrical's harder to hire, too. Right, so I mean, you gotta balance, there's two things. There's about the response time, but also the challenge.
If you change it, you're gonna lose another employee. If you don't change it, you're gonna lose another employee in that department because they don't fit the qualifications. Then we're down to one.
Well, that also begs a larger question about what kind of requirements do we have for this job? Do we have to have them as an actual lineman, or do we have the opportunity to say we don't need a lineman, we do electrician, and we need a lineman to help, and you kinda drag that out, and that kind of a purchase? I don't know.
Well, I know they were all questions that we've discussed numerous times and haven't really come up with a good answer, but I, I don't think we can make this job description so not kind of accommodate to keep what we got until we come up with another plan.
I agree. No, I'm not, I'm not saying otherwise, Mayor. I think that the, the point here is, is this is begging the larger question that we haven't answered.
And I know this department needs a lot of discussion, and, I mean, there's some answers there that need, that we're gonna have to get answered, or questions that we're gonna have to get answered in the near future, but I, I think right now, even if it's on a short-term basis, I think we've got to accommodate. We gotta make it to accommodate what we have.
I mean, we're pressed on this decision, but we heard earlier tonight from
Troy.
Troy, that we might be able to hire somebody on a short-term basis, right? I mean, is that, I mean.
Yeah, that's the first I knew that they offered that service.
That was more leadershipy.
No, but it shouldn't be, shouldn't be considered long-term either.
Right.
I mean, we're, we're kind of in a bind with two down now. I mean, regardless. I mean, do we need, do we need to make this decision tonight, or do we work on it? Try to get, try to get this issue resolved by maybe hiring somebody at short term? I don't know.
Is this a new job description?
That's the job description. I don't know about new. It wasn't hired, Dennis wasn't hired into this. That requirement wasn't there when Dennis was hired. That just, I don't know when that, we came in after him, though, but.
It was two thousand twelve.
Right, but it, so it was about a year after Dennis was hired.
So it was put in after Rusty was hired, too?
Uh, I don't remember when.
Rusty was always fifteen, mate, uh, obviously fifteen.
Obviously, it did, that, for the.
But this is just for the lead?
Lead, right, right.
Right.
That's the lead position we're talking about.
I say we figure on an hour basis and put a fifty or sixty mile range on it.
Yep. Too far out. Leave it the way it is.
We got concentric circles. Can you go to that slide, Chris?
Yeah.
The inner line is, is ten miles, which is the standard in the, in the job description. The outer line is twenty-five miles. And then it goes from Centerville to Kiasaku, it goes from Queen City in Memphis up to north of Atlanta.
I don't know why I can't. But that's air mile.
Well, we got other job descriptions that we don't follow that rule in. That's been hired recently.
That, that's not road miles, that's air mile.
Road miles, if, if you want to know road miles for Centerville, you'd be on the very eastern edge of Centerville and the very western edge of Kiyosaku. So, it's not, in those two cases, it, it's not that much of a difference. I mean, if somebody's off half a mile, you'd say, okay, that's close enough. But, I mean, the point here is, is that this is an example of how far out you can be. There's the inner line, the inner line gets you right down to state line.
Well, this is handy. I don't know, I'm trying to get it there, I'm sorry.
There's nothing, there's nothing says we can't use, you know, other services even for call-outs. I mean, the, the goal of the lead is that we're going to have that person dedicated to our infrastructure and knowing what, you know, future plans and all, working all that stuff and leading the day-to-day activities. I mean, we could still, I met with, today, a contractor today and he gave me his B schedule, you know, that we can have, and he's even offered to place a bucket truck and a digger here in our yard and can save money on that and have it here, you know, and he can give you basically like a four-hour minimum call-out and they can come and do stuff. And he's got this guy as close as Kirksville, but, so, I mean, there's, there's other ways to go and we're going to have to talk about this, because linemen is just tough, everybody knows it's hard. I mean, you heard Troy actually said, he said, if you don't pay the market rate for utilities people, you already plan, you lose your.
I think that's why we're going to have to be a little more flexible.
Right, so, you know, we have two linemen now, or, you know, four linemen now, we're assuming we may have two linemen, so.
The person that we're talking about lives here. How are we looking for it?
You know that.
Yeah.
Nobody told me.
Nobody told me.
So, we're down to two. We can't exclude, I'm just going to say the word Rusty. We can't exclude Rusty because he's, lives so far away because he's here, he's one of our employees and he's one of our employees to move up in the organization, so, you know. We, we should look at what we can do for provisions on time for him to get here, I guess, but.
Maybe you could incentivize, incentivize you moving here. Well, but he just mentioned a call-out service, which is going to have trucks here, but they're in Kirksville. Yeah, that's no quicker than that, that's no quicker.
But there's, there'd be two guys or whatever, as I was saying, if we, if we, if we're down to two, how are we going to cover call now? We may have to find somebody to come in.
We, we're going to be in a short-term situation regardless here.
We'll have to get some people in here to help cover call, especially with spring lightning storms and stuff coming on, we'll have to have somebody. I A and U, I thought they offered that service. We should be exploring all the options, but this.
Unless we can approach S I E C about.
Yeah, mutual aid, whatever. So, lots of things to look at, yeah. But I, I don't think that we can.
I don't think we can make a rule that's going to get rid of an employee.
No, I don't either.
Well, you're not making a rule. You're making an exception to a written job description requirement.
We, we could, we could make an exception to the requirement.
Change job requirement.
And does it have to be a permanent exception or can it be a temporary thing? I don't know.
No, it's changed it back at some point in time if it doesn't pan out.
Well, okay, here, here, what's your recommendation? This is, this is here for you, let's hear your recommendation, what are we just?
I, I think that you have to be sensitive to the fact that we have to have people. There's no question about that.
Yeah.
I think that the response time is something that you all need to recognize from a standpoint that if you got somebody that lives an hour away, well, the citizens of the community tolerate the fact that there's going to be a long time before people show up. That's a value judgment that you all have to assess in that context. If you think that an hour response time is acceptable, then do it.
I don't think an hour response time is acceptable, but I don't think that the lead person has to be the one that responds every time there's an outage.
But it's like Dan said, it's, it's that you're going to be, you're going to typically.
Him and somebody else.
Him and somebody else at least, or at least every other week. I, I, I mean, I, I think the point here is, is it's not so much who the person is, but rather what you think is an acceptable service for the citizens of the community.
So, right now, we don't have any, there's no time limit on a call-out. Have we been more than an hour before till somebody got here?
No.
I'm not talking about the last six months, in the last 20 years.
Well, yeah, exactly. But then the last year, I can say within the last year, I mean, we've been pretty responsive. Even when, so, sometimes when Rusty's been on-call and, and called in, like, sometimes he'll call somebody else to come in, they'll start diagnosing as he's coming in, on the injured side. So, it's just, you know, it may not work, but I'm not saying it's, you know, the best.
So, that, that's also with the understanding of having people here.
Yeah, we also have.
You're basically, right now, with the electric department, you basically got two guys pretty much on-call all the time. So, I mean, we've got Dave that lives here. You know, I guess, I, I don't really see what the change is going to be. It's not made any different than when he was on-call before.
Our response time would be slower for right now till we get more people hired, unless we can figure out a way to get outside contractors or something. So, in the short-term, probably need to do that anyway.
Yep, we better get something.
Is there a long-term solution in using that? Maybe. I mean, we might wind up looking at how we staff electric just completely different if we start looking at it from the standpoint of what kind of contracting opportunities are out there. I mean, Darren raised that, that maybe there's S I E C circumstance. I mean, there's other electrical oper, electrical operators too in the area, so it's not like they're completely out. I mean, I don't, Dan, I mean, not necessarily you per se, but, I mean, people of your ilk, do they have to be linemen to do some of this work?
Yeah, yeah.
So, if, if that's the case, then then we've limited ourselves and justified ourselves. So, I, I, I think the thing that we have to do right now is, is you can at least temporarily make this assignment, recognizing that the response time is, is going to be slower. Maybe you evaluate it in that regard and say, well, let's try it for six months to find out if, if there is a problem. I'm, I'm saying this from the standpoint of trying to figure out how to get yourself to a more permanent decision. Because right now, we're under a gun situation that really can't make a, a solid decision. You just, you just can't right now. Because I think that we're going to look at trying to fill in the breach here with temporary somehow with, with outside people, that's the only thing that we can do. And we're going to do that anyway. So, you know, I, I think the real issue here is, is, you know, talk to the constituents, talk to your people, say, you know, can you accept a, an hour delay on, on electrical response? I mean, I, 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 I don't know.
It doesn't matter what they say, if we don't have somebody anyway, we, we can only do so much.
Right, well, in the short-term, that might not be the case, but the point is, is, the point is, is that long-term, you can address that.
But I think long-term, we have to, I think we have to hold this off for long-term. I think we have to try and get somebody in here to get that.
There's not an easy short-term answer here unless you say, look, we're going to try and figure out how to do this. On a short-term basis, we can probably fill in the breach somehow, but is that a long-term result? I don't know whether the council's got any idea on how to do this on a long-term basis. I, I, I don't think we do. I mean.
A lineman are a hundred thousand a year.
Oh, easily. I mean, that's, that's the problem here is, is that this utility has been operating in a completely different vein, you know, and, and how much alignment work do we have to have? How much of this work that we contract out is, is out there? I mean, we contract for doing the pole replacements right now, right?
I mean, if you got a line or the case, a line gets knocked out.
Right.
Not like you can just contract all the line work out.
I mean, it's one thing if, if a house lost a, lost a line itself and you say, you know, it's going to be an hour or two, but if you've got a neighborhood that's out, I mean, the, the one we had on President State, we were working on that thing for most of the day. From about nine to three, we had it on and off for a while.
Did the city reconnect with their hands?
We probably were without, what, two and a half hours to start with?
Peter five and six.
And then we're off, then we're on for something, we're off again. I mean, it was, it was a big one, but, I mean, the fact is, is that could happen at any time.
Three linemen.
And they had three linemen and, and other people too. I mean, it wasn't just the line, we had five people in total, including Dan, so, I, I mean. Hey, i- i- if you truly are going to look at linemen, that, that the going rate, Dan, the mayor's right. I mean, a hundred thousand dollars and.
Those are many.
Well, you, well, but it's, it's, it's hard to say how they do their earnings because a lot of it is, these guys only work six months out of the year too. And make huge money when they work.
So, so let's just know that we're going to go forward, we're going to, we're going to post two positions here, right? We're going to have to get another position posted and you're going to have to find some short-term solutions here, so.
Well, we'll post a second position, and the, the question is, is how do we even fill the first one?
Yeah, we have to start with.
Do we have to fill the first one? Do we have to fill this? Yep. Can we just have a position?
Yeah, I, no, we need to buy a building.
This, this is the one that's in the bargaining unit.
They're both in the.
They're both in the bargaining unit, but.
This has already been posted. We've already got somebody that accepts that.
Signed.
Signed for it.
They've signed, but they are not qualified.
According to the job description.
Oh, okay.
So, you need, you need an exception.
But it's only the 10-mile radius thing that keeps him from being qualified.
So, you need an exception for that, either on a short-term or long-term basis in order for that job bid to move forward. Otherwise, his, his bid can't be accepted and we'll have to just advertise.
Go outside there.
Yes.
And then the second one, we have to post internally. We'll also have to plot for it after this, but, I mean, we go through the process again of five, five working day internal posting and then go out. Want to wait a minute? Wait, on a temporary basis or not?
When Rusty was hired, he, I think when he was hired, he had a residency requirement too, but in August, I read the minutes, because that's what he told me, he said, I read the minutes back in 15. They approved the job, or they approved the job description change and they also approved hiring him. So, he said at that same meeting, because I, I wouldn't hear, so, back in 15, but he said at the same meeting, they waived the job description, or they waived the, the relocation.
Response time.
So.
No. What, what happened in 15, what happened in 15 was, he was supposed to move to Davis County. And he didn't? And he didn't.
So.
That's the way I remember it.
Yeah.
What did the minutes say?
Minutes just said they approved the, the, so in May, they approved the job description change and then in August, they approved the hiring. Didn't see anything about what description said or what, anything. To. Right.
You were on the council then? There is your authority. He was supposed to move, but he didn't.
Is that what the minutes say?
No.
Minutes say.
Minutes don't say anything.
And that's really what I want is just to, yeah, I don't want to go back to that same thing. I just want it in there, what you want to do, you know, and again, a lot of companies have done a lot of things, they've retained their people, so, I mean, it's just, what are you going to do and what do you want to do?
Your choices are waive it, waive it on a temporary basis or don't waive it?
There, there was, well, I mean, you could waive it, there's also, when we talked about this a little bit, you know, there was the waive it, not waive it. I don't want to, how, how did we talk, we talked about saying you didn't have to live there, but you have to be on-call, be responded in so many minutes. When you're on-call, you're, you're parking yourself close, right?
Yeah, but he's going to be on-call toning initially.
On-call, he'll be on-call every other week, right? Because there's two, two people that would be on-call, so he would be on-call every other week. And he may have to respond to a, a call when he's not on-call.
Here, here's the deal, I mean, if we're going to get that in the weeds, what are we going to do? Is the second he gets a call, we're going to write it down and then we're going to watch the clock to make sure, because, you know, we're not going to be, we're not going to be that petty on this policy. Or we, we want to get somebody the opportunity to get here and get to work and.
I, I, it, you know, the standard, I mean, if, if you say, if you say, look, you're not waiting the requirement, that's, if, that would be what Rusty would have to do, is you have to find a way to move close while he's on-call. I, I mean, we could work that out one way or the other. It's not saying that we're waiting, not waiting the requirement, but I mean, we could work that out administratively from the standpoint of, okay, if you're going to be close by, you've got to be close by. But I, I, I mean, I kind of agree with Mayor, it's hard enough to hire these jobs. I mean, that's not going to be easy. And if we hire, let's say that we got some good candidates to come in, but.
They're too far away.
They're too far away. Me, I, I think that what you'd like to anticipate, the kind of hire that you would get is either somebody just like Brigham was, very young, no experience, going to work for his journey and then go work for the gas company. Or, or, uh, somebody that's at the backside of their career, don't want to be climbing up poles like you would in big snow storms and deal with a, a less stressful type of environment, working in a small city without any travel.
We just got rid of both of them.
One for each, yeah. And I would submit to you that the ones that we have left are probably more on the backside.
What are we looking for, a motion or?
Yes, because at this point, they can't act on, the requirement would be that, that if this position is going to go to the person that has bid on it, they would have to establish residency within a 10-mile radius.
Or maybe work it out where they can be on-call within that 10-mile radius.
The language says residency in a 10-mile radius.
If we could work that out, we could bring that back to you with the understanding that the intent is going to be that, but.
Can we, can we do this for a period of one year? Can we, can we change this 10-mile radius for the period of one year and then reevaluate it? I mean, I don't know if I'd want to take the position if I was Rusty, if that was a condition, but there, could we do that?
I think you could make the decision tonight that you're going to waive that requirement for one year.
Okay.
And basically be saying, this is an experiment.
Okay.
See how it goes, see what other success we have in filling the open positions.
Yeah.
And go from there.
I would make that recommendation, that we waive the 10-mile rule for a period of one year and, and at that time, a year from now, we look at that and reassess.
Is that a motion?
Yes.
All in favor? Pose.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Discuss and give approval for the first section of a boy handbook. All right.
I like it.
Well, here's the question, how much you want to spend time on this? I, I don't know whether you, one of the big issues is the residency issue.
Yep.
You just went through this. You know, right now, there really is very limited residency requirements except for the police chief and the fire chief and whatever you have in a job description for the electric. I don't know whether that's. have in the job description for the electric. Um, I don't know whether that's a big issue with, with you or not. The 25-mile number, I put in there only because that's what Oskaloosa has and that's, this is the Oskaloosa template of the personnel manual. I checked with, um, Centerville, uh, yesterday and said, what do you guys do? They don't do anything except for the police chief and fire chief. They have no residency required. No within response time. Now, they say that typically, everybody lives in Appinews County or right on the edge, but, um, they don't have the kind of problem and realistically, you got everybody living in Davis County or at the edge with, with one obvious exception.
Yeah.
Two.
Centerville doesn't have municipal gas or utility side.
No, I mean, the utility issue is obvious there, so it's not as, as, as a big deal. But I mean, I, the, the issue here is, is that.
DPW.
Well, yeah, I've said that, that we are close. I mean, there are people that, there are, there are portions of Davis County that's farther away than Danny, but if you look at these circles, um, but.
Still should be.
The, the point being is, is what do you, what do you wanna do? If you wanna do anything about this?
What's that, Earl?
That's, that's a bit, we, we're not gonna require it for our need, electrician, our lineman. Gee, you're picking and choosing.
Not really.
Yes, you are.
Don't have a lot of choice no matter.
Yeah, I think you do. He was supposed to move here back in 2015.
Gonna fire him and do with one electrician? Minutes don't reflect that.
So at any rate, I mean, we've just gone through the discussion. I don't know whether you wanna continue on that discussion or not. I know time is getting late, but, um.
I've looked, I've looked through the manual. I mean, it's, it's kinda cumbersome to go through the whole thing, but.
Well, this is the first 30 pages of about 100 pages.
Yep, I know.
And, and to be honest with you, the next time, the next time we come up with it's gonna be a lot more, it's gonna be a lot more work than what you have in these first 30, 'cause there's a lot of empty spaces here, including table of contents and stuff like that. The first four sections, um, the, the only other real discussion in this, I think, my perspective is, is just a reiteration of the chain of command. Uh, Chris, he's got the organization chart up there that's the one that has been around. We need to make one addition to it for mechanic and one addition for, uh, the finance manager that we approved in the budget that we're gonna have formally approved through the job description in the next council meeting. But, um, I, I, chain of command can be cumbersome and problematic too. I mean, I know that there's been discussions about just exactly how we deal with parts. And, and we have a construction project right now that, with the pool deck that all of a sudden was, you know, it was an understanding that part department was gonna handle it and all of a sudden the project kinda fell apart and it came back to public works. And we wound up spending a lot of staff time this week on a pool deck project that there was problems that weren't anticipated in the specification and the construction group. And so we now are dealing with backing out, uh, a whole lot of sand that was used to fill and avoid from a prior repair project that probably shouldn't have been done the way it was done then. But the fact is, is that, um, uh, there was, there was no strong line of communication about that. There was, there was people making decisions without any input from three or two department directors and myself about this problem. Um, I, I, I mean, if we have a line of chain community issue, I, I would consider this is, is, is tough. But that, this is, this is something that I would write somebody up on for what's happened here. Because decisions were made way out of control on this thing. And it's, it's, today, this week was pothole week and we're not getting enough potholes done this week because all of a sudden you have a construction project that became a big problem and people were making decisions about how to address it that we're in charge. So.
Man, I.
Can we put this handbook off till the next meeting? Or is this a?
Well, here's the thing. I mean, I'm trying to get it done. I, I mean, my, my, my goals and objectives was to get this done the end of last month.
Really?
And we've been pushing a lot of stuff back, but I mean, you want to, but I don't anticipate an easy agenda in the next meeting. We've got a big, we've got some big stuff too, but if you want to, that's fine, but we're gonna really have to put the calls to it next week because next two, the next two meetings, this is the easy one. The next two meetings are gonna be really tough.
We're gonna start earlier next.
I don't have a problem with that.
I just like in the interest of time, we still got some stuff to get through that we have to.
Do you wanna do six o'clock then in the next meeting?
Sure, man.
Okay.
I'll write that down.
Is that all right, everybody? Six o'clock?
Okay.
We're gonna send out the next.
Oh, I'll get you the next batch. I'll get you the next batch. It'll be another 30, 40 pages. I'll get you that out probably at least a week in advance. So it'll be next one.
And the other issue we face with that is we have to ask, and when you guys finally get a pass, it has to go to the union or?
I, I've already reviewed the first section. I'm, I'm reviewing each section with the union right now. I've reviewed the first section and had no problem. And I understood the residency thing as, well, you know, ultimately, that's our choice. It's not theirs.
I've read through it all. I don't see a lot of issues. Maybe probably a third of it's table of contents.
Yeah, I, I, this is the easy one.
Right.
The next one's gonna get into us. You can see it's section five in the table of contents. There's a lot of stuff in section five. That's the only section that we're gonna do at the next meeting.
Consider approval of annual funding for Welcome Center.
Last year, you gave the Welcome Center $2,000 and then requesting the same amount.
Where will that come from? That from tourism, from hotel, hotel tax or?
No, community development. There's a line item in the budget. Same line that like Main Street comes from.
Okay. We gotta make a motion to approve the funding.
All in favor?
Aye.
Pose. Consider approval of funding for Main Street. It's their quarterly, it's what, 80s, 700, $50 or something.
Give them a vote, right?
This is all just.
It, DC, DC vote.
Get a true one, pass out the money.
Their quarterly budget items.
Move to approve. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Pose. Consider approval of Class C liquor license renewal with outdoor. Oh, consider approval for DC, DC.
Move approve.
Thank you. All in favor tonight?
Aye.
Consider approval of Class C liquor license renewal with outdoor service and Sunday sales for Bloomfield Country Club.
Move approve.
Second? All second. Earl got first. Jack got first.
John?
Yes.
Earl?
No.
Scott?
Yeah.
Jack?
Yeah.
Darren?
Yes.
Consider and discuss summer employment.
So I put that on there for hiring summer help, start from May 1st and, uh, just, I know we have some staff shortages. We'll have some, basically, I think some funding we could use to, to fund this, so we still come out of there for this year. Um, I'd request hire two people for the summer. And you saw the job description there. We post that and hire them.
Pretty standard, isn't it?
Well, we didn't hire anybody.
Didn't have anybody last year, so.
The two years, two summers I've been here, yeah, I haven't had any.
They've done it before.
They've done it before. I've heard they've done it before.
They just, when I took over, we just weren't ready for that, so we didn't bring.
Do they used to do the mowing and stuff or?
I think they helped the streets and did some, um.
We had temporary summer help.
And this actually would come out of, so employees, we did a lot of budget talk. This would reduce some of the general fund, uh, OT, OT on that side too. So again, just another trying to be a cost-saving measure on the general fund side.
Move to approve summer help? Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Claims?
Move to approve claims.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any more public comments? Reports? Gary?
I've been in contact with Northland Securities. Um, we need to get started on doing the rate setting for the sewage treatment plant and they've advised us that, uh, there is an SRF grant for, uh, doing such a study. It's $4,000. I'm just giving you notifications all within my expenditure authority and of course, there's no expenditures there if there's a grant, so I'm gonna just go ahead and get that started. What was his first name?
Troy.
Troy. Had the last name, Jody. Okay, but, uh, he mentioned iPad tonight as, as an investment vehicle. I've actually been in contact with iPad again this week. Um, we're gonna have to put together an investment policy that will be coming, uh, to you all at the next meeting. I don't think it'll be that complicated. But we do have, um, uh, other monies that, you know, I moved money into a money market this, this past, um, not a money market, it's actually a kind of a super money market, whatever you wanna call it. It's, it's earning a lot more interest. We right now have, uh, $2.8 million since Bank of the West. Earning six tenths of a percent. And they sent us a notice this week saying, well, there hasn't been any activity on this for over a year. Uh, are you still alive effectively? They sent it out to their older customers, like to say, you know, let them know that, by the way, you have money here. It's a computer-generated thing. But, um, we need to put together a policy. I don't think it'll be anything difficult, but the point is, is that we need to actually have an, an understanding about how we're going to do the, uh, that, that kind of investment. And, and certainly, you know, when you're sitting on a couple million or a couple, $3 million, um.
Should be earning something.
We, we, we can be doing a lot better given the, the circumstances. Uh, the last thing is, is I wanna recognize Sandy. Um, we got all those minutes approved tonight and that is a real difficult thing to do, given the press business. And, uh, we finally got him caught up and Sandy just had to pour over this. And I know a lot of folks are acknowledging the fact that, you know, these, these minutes are the kind of things that, well, it doesn't really make a whole lot of difference, but as you noted in, uh, in the audit, you know, we kinda got dinged for it a little bit by saying, you know, you didn't get your minutes done in time. And, and realistically, the recognition is, as much as anything, realize that there's a lot of just routine work, work, work that has to be done just to keep this thing going. And, and Sandy has, has, has come to it and, and it's got it done. And, and it's been a labor that's involved other people writing minutes, including Earl's wife and myself. Uh, it, it, it's been hard to do, given the, the transition that we've been going through for the last year or so. But I think we need to recognize Sandy for, for the fact that we, we got the minutes caught up.
Yeah, Sandy.
Add a girl on Tandy.
That's all I got. Danny?
Yeah, so just, uh, of course, everybody's seen last week, we've been, basically, everybody in the public works, uh, department's been working on, uh, patching holes in streets. They had everybody out there but two, so they've all had their turn on the shovel and the passer, so, uh, I think it's a lot better. We've tried to focus on Walnut, North, Madison East, definitely trying to get some thoroughfitters open so you can cross town on that side area. And we've been actually expanding past more of that. We've done a lot more of the bigger intersections, uh, like over Atlanta and Bank over there, those kind of stuff. So, and we'll continue to work more on that, uh, as we go. So we, I just kinda did a big push to get that going. Uh, Trent Matthews, our new gas technician, will start Monday, so looking forward to that. He'll be on there. Also with that, and we also did accept, uh, resignation from Reagan, uh, Mulecheck, whose last day will be Friday, the 12th. Uh, he took another position, uh, with another company. And, uh, then also this, this past week too, Dean, uh, also passed his water service operation distribution grade two license. So he did a big job there, uh, in passing that. So it's nice to have, you know, go water distro of grade two, so, which now means he gets to do a lot more, uh, you know, stuff with DNR and a lot more certification stuff, so, which is awesome. So, yeah, just working on things like that and working towards, uh, getting the streets back in shape. And we're, we're gonna, now towards working with the engineer and start working on a streets project. I forget the Culver project. Basically, kinda started it ready to, to go. So now with the CBG, we're ready to kick in, uh, move there. Uh, we'll be working on prepping for that, so.
Chris, a couple quick things. One, um, Troy didn't mention it, but one of the things that we benefited from IMU just in the last few weeks is they have a device called a phase tracker that allows us, we, we've mapped all of the overhead lines and the phase tracker lets us, the A, B, and C phases. So when they go around corners and they swap them, we know where they are. They normally rent it at 500 bucks a week and they loaned it to us and said, look, if you'll do a presentation on how to use it, you can have it till you're done with it. So.
And all that's, and Sage has all that intergone.
It's all done and, uh, you know, we used it for four or five weeks. So, you know, $2,500 worth of value there that, just for being willing to share our information. Um, one of the things that we've talked about in the past was Rock Mountain Institute. We were put on a waitlist. Um, officially, we find out tomorrow whether or not we will be included. I've talked back and forth. My assumption is we won't be included. However, the team members that were, had committed to going, have also, many of them have said, hey, we'd still like to get together. We've committed the time. We've got some travel time. What if we came to Iowa? Some of us come to Iowa and we do this anyway. We worked through it. So I would still be interested in, if, if we do that, we could take anybody that wants to participate locally. And the question would be, do we try to do it here? Do we try to do it in a setting that would be like two days, um, someplace elsewhere? It's a little bit of a retreat so that we can focus. Um, I, I'd be interested in your thoughts.
Something like that.
Pardon? Like a honey cream, or we could do it up at, uh, you know, IMU. I'm sure we could use some of their facilities, whatever you guys think, but, um, I've got, I'd have to do some work to put together some, a little bit of how to facilitate it and, you know, what are the goals to get out of it. But I think if these people are willing to lend their expertise, we oughta take them up on it. And if we could get you all to participate in whatever level you can, I think it'd be really beneficial. The goal is just to do very similar to what we did on the housing, but how do we hammer out and get the details in place and get things figured out on this, on the, on the.
Energy.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Uh, and just really get it knocked out so that we can get it going. All right. So, um, I'll send you some more details and be thinking about that. And if any of you have suggestions on how you think that should work, please let me know. Um, I think I'll stop there for tonight.
Fire chief? The one that I really got is I've been in communication with Frontline and worked with Greg Proctor. We've tentatively booked the dates of the 24th, 25th, and the 26th of April. Frontline's gonna be down here and Greg has booked out a digger and lineman to set those poles for the storm sirens.
for the storm sirens. Now, this all could change, with storms and everything else, but these were some of the last dates, so I'm afraid if we don't try to get some of this stuff put in the ground on those dates, we're going to miss, we're caught with nothing, so. I had a visit with the fairgrounds, Dave Hall recommended moving one of the poles from out along the highway in towards a pole that had a secondary, the fair board said that's not an issue. They said they didn't have a problem. Danny Stedy visited with Bruce Piper, we got to renegotiate a spot for that pole, so we just need to get stuff put into place, and I think we're ready to set some poles and get ready for storm season.
Was there a pole on, Bruce?
Yeah. Evidently, Dave said the easements.
Ridge Park.
So. That easement's expired, and Bruce doesn't want one there, so that's fine.
Thank you back in.
I think there's a light across the street, across Highway 63, and the car wash, so maybe that's something we can work with easy enough. Other than that, we're doing good, our radios, our handhelds are in, we're just getting stuff programmed up, so we're setting pretty good.
Council updates? Got complaints the other day about ATVs. I think we all got one.
I think this might be a different one, yeah, where that's even.
It was in their own yard.
I think ATV, ATV, UTV, whatever ordinance it is, is next on the agenda to get looked at, worked over.
Do, Kim has driving vehicle, does she want us to do it, or you want the police chief?
What's that?
It'd be under the jurisdiction of enforcement for police.
Well, that's what I mean, I think that, we need to have that discussion and decide what's under whose jurisdiction, and then go from there.
Plan I got the other day, didn't involve ATV on a street, you know, neighbor's yard, other things.
All right. Close session, close session pursuant to Iowa Code 1.51C, to discuss strategy with council on matters that are presently in litigation or where litigation is imminent or.